Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring the February 28th, 2018 Board of Education meeting to order. Before we begin, I'd like everybody to rise and join me in a moment of silence for the seventeen people that were tragically murdered in Florida two weeks ago today. Thank you. I'd like everybody to remain standing and join me in the Pledgeable Agents, please. My Pledgeable Agent is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty, justice for all. Thank you and welcome, everybody. Tonight, we'll take care of a few orders of business and then we'll get to what I believe, what we all feel is the important part of our meeting and talking about security in our school district. Everything's important, but...
You're important.
You're important. Any, any in all correspondence that are sent to the district? That's for you.
Yes.
That can be shared or out on the table in the hallway for anybody to review. Dr. Johnson?
We have the recognition of some students tonight, and I'd like to invite Mr. Murphy to go to the microphone and introduce them. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. It's at this time of the year that we recognize our valedictorian and salutatorian, which does indicate that these are the two students with the highest weighted grade point average in the school, but if we could just take a moment to testify to the fact that these two students speak more than just mere calculations and grade point averages, but these are the pride and joy and speak directly to the passion and talent that our students exhibit and some of the excellence that they demonstrate. Our valedictorian is Mr. Michael Louven, who's not only the valedictorian and pursued the full IB diploma, but he's extended even those most rigorous standards and have exceeded those by taking additional higher level science classes and two advanced placement math courses. His analytic and problem-solving abilities extends way beyond the classroom, as demonstrated by the fact that he was a rensselaer medalist in 11th grade and a member of our prestigious National Honor Math, Science, and Foreign Language Honor Societies as a junior and a senior. Outside of the classroom, he's involved in more extracurricular activities than I could name. He's the varsity captain of the Quiz Bowl, vice president of the Military History Club, founder of the Asian Country Club, and member of Athletes Helping Athletes. He is also a devoted, and I can testify to the fact, a lightning-fast all-county cross-country runner who qualified for the state championships this season. He was elected to be News 12's Long Island Athlete of the Week in December for his academic and athletic accomplishments. I'm as exhausted looking at his length of accomplishments as I am proud to have witnessed his maturation and growth, and as in the case with Michael, as well with the salutatorian. It's nice to celebrate those students that give us a lot of hope that the future is bright due to the fact that we are producing such scholars and really good guys. Michael, come on up. Our salutatorian, it's a twofold celebration. Peter Weiss was named as the salutatorian in 2018. He, too, is a full IB diploma candidate and has yet again exceeded those rigorous course requirements by taking a higher level chemistry, high level physics, as well as AP Calculus. Although math and science has been one of his strengths, he's a very gifted linguist whose French teacher professes that his fluency level borders on just that, fluency in French. Outside of the classroom, he's an integral part of the Southside community. In activities such as mathletes, the French Club, the Chess Club, the Quiz Bowl, the Engineering Club, and the Robotics Club, Peter leads his peers by quiet example. One of the things that I'm proudest of with both of these students is they didn't let academic accomplishments interfere with their passions. Peter's passion as a musician is manifested as his entire coursework and his presence in all of our more elite and accomplished groups. He's an accomplished musician, and he was chosen to participate in the New York State Music Association's Winter Concert. Here at the high school, he's a member of our prestigious Jazz Ensemble and Chamber Orchestra Groups, as well as the Triumph Music Honor Society. When school is not in session, Peter participates in the Columbia University Honors Program and volunteers in the Genetic and Genomic Sciences Department at Mount Sinai Hospital in Manhattan. I miss him already. We are confident in his abilities and equally confident in our future and thank him for all the contributions that he's made to the school. Peter? We're almost done. Each year, the National Merit Program is based on the 1.5 million students who take the PSAT in 10th grade each year. Of those, 50,000, which is about 3% of the test takers, are commended scholars. From there, 16,000, which is less than 1% of all test takers, are chosen as National Merit Scholar semifinalists. From those semifinalists, they're asked to complete an application, take the SAT, write an essay, and get recommendations from their schools to pass on to the next level. Fewer than 1% of those test takers qualify as National Merit finalists, which is fewer than 15,000 of the 1.5 million who started out. Those students, this spring, qualify for scholarships, both at the collegiate level, through the National Merit Program, and through outside corporations. It's my privilege and honor to recognize Peter as a National Merit finalist and wish him well in the upcoming weeks as the scholarships are doled out. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, the calendar?
Yes, thank you. We have, in fact, examined really two viable calendars for the upcoming school year in 2018, 19, and 1920. The 18, 19 is a calendar on which we expect that the board will act later on tonight, and it's going to be my recommendation that, and by the way, just so for those of you who don't regularly come to these meetings, for the very first time, the New York State Education Department made the decision to end the school year in the middle of a week. Generally, the last, what they call the Regents Day, Regents Rating Day, is on a Friday, and so we always end usually on either the second or the third Friday in June. This year, they made the decision because there weren't enough days to meet the 180-day requirement, given all of the different holidays that are now celebrated in various parts of the state. So what they did was they decided to move that from Friday to the following Wednesday. What we did was we took a look at that and thought it would be a good idea for us to end our school year on the last Friday in June, and so we, and I, will be recommending to the board, in fact, that that is exactly what we do. So what it means is that our school year begins not in August, as we have become accustomed to for our teachers, and in some years for our children, but the teachers will be returning the day after Labor Day, and children will be returning the Wednesday after Labor Day, and then we will conclude our school year two days following the Wednesday of that Regents Rating Day, on Friday, June 28th. The only other change in there, and it's, is Memorial Day weekend, we have set aside four days. Originally, the calendar that we published had it Friday and Monday off. We're going to do Monday and Tuesday because of the IB calendar ends on that Friday before Memorial Day, and they were somewhat hesitant about making any changes, and we couldn't predict, so what we did was we included in the calendar, instead of that Friday, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So those are the changes that we introduced after the early release of our calendar, and the one that I'm recommending to the board includes those four days on Memorial Day, starts the calendar year, I mean, the school year after Labor Day, and ends on the 28th of June. So I'm not sure where the board is on that, but that's the recommendation.
Any comments from the board? No more? Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Now we come to the item for discussion, security in our buildings. Parkland, Florida happened two weeks ago today. It was a terrible tragedy, heartbreaking for everybody to hear and talk about, and I believe that's, that's the catalyst for what we're talking about tonight. It's in the minds of so many people in our community. We, as a board members, constantly review the security in our buildings, constantly put the safety of the children and staff in front, you know, to review and make sure that we do the best for them. Tonight, we'll review those security issues we have, those security procedures and protocols we have in place, and speak to what we hope to accomplish in the future, in the near and a little further near future. I'll hand it over to Dr. Johnson now.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Shea. Let me just begin, first of all, by really thanking the members of the community who chose to communicate with us in email messages, telephone conversation, in some cases, conversations directly with some of our principals. It's been a yeoman's task on your part, I suspect, to examine what goes on in each of the buildings that your children attend, and then provide some very, very insightful information back to us. Some of them were in incredible details, and we welcomed every single one of them. This is, this is not a problem that either you are going to solve or we are going to solve in isolation. We're going to have to work together on this one. We, as a community, need to understand the depth of the problems that we are looking at. You and I are going to have to figure out a way in which our children, and we are raising our children together, so that they, when they come to school, will always feel safe. When they enter whatever the building, whether it be one of our five elementaries in the middle or the high school, we know at the end of the day, or during the day, that while they traverse the curriculum, while they are working with their classmates, while they are working with their teachers, there is never a time when they have to be distracted from their learning because they feel unsafe when they're in our buildings. That is paramount importance to us. I can tell you that the conversations that we've had over the years in trying to achieve that didn't start two weeks ago. It started about five years ago, when, in fact, we started working on the bond issue for the high school and for the other facilities in our school district. Many of the discussions that we had about the renovation of this high school was, in fact, to make the building safer for all of our kids, and that has been an ongoing discussion. So what we would love to do with you tonight is to share with you some of the things that we have done over the years, either through the bond issue, what we have contemplated as part of, some of you may know about, there's something called the Smart Bond, money that the governor has put aside. We've applied for it. We'd like to share that with you. We'd also like to talk to you about some of the things that we have done within the last year. I think one of the saddest things that has occurred as a result of what happened down in Parkland is that it has certainly accelerated the movement of much of what we have to do and made it paramount in our consciousness. It's something that we have to work on immediately, and we intend to do just that. The other thing I just wanted to mention to you, and one of the saddest things, was that the young man who was involved in that shooting was disconnected from both the community and his school. We make an effort to keep our kids connected. In the 31 years that I have served as superintendent, I have never put a student out of the schools. We suspend them. We have an alternate school. We have ways in which we can maintain connectedness to all of our kids. We do not want to see anybody left out in the cold. It was just not a police problem. It was a problem in maintaining some connection to a child who was giving out all kinds of signals that there were problems going on inside of him that needed to be addressed professionally, and we're not. We do that. You'll hear from Noreen Leahy later on in part of our presentation, many of the things that we do within this school district. It's part of a conversation that you and I need to continue. It's not the beginning. Hopefully, it's the middle, but it's something that we need to focus our attention on, and that is, keeping our children safe is just not keeping them safe, having them feel safe, and not allowing them to develop habits or get involved in things that are going to create real risky behavior. We need to work together as both a community of schools, community of parents, and a community at large in Rockville Center to ensure that this happens. So what we'd like to do, and we put together a short press series of slides for you to consider, is a brief summary of what we do within the school district. And just understand, one of the things that you need to note is that this is not the superintendent alone. I don't work alone, particularly on safety issues. We stand shoulder to shoulder with every single administrator in the school district, so I've asked all of them to join me tonight, and even in the presentation tonight, it is not going to be me talking to you. There's going to be the team that I have within the central office, each taking a piece of. If I walked out of the office, Robert Bartels could easily just take over and engage you in exactly the same conversation. What I'm saying to you is that this is not something that is taken lightly by any of us. It is something that involves our principals at the building level, our directors, and we want to have you participate in that discussion tonight. So I know that John O'Shea and the rest of the board really made an effort to invite your input. We need to listen, and then at the end of the day, we need to work together as parents, as a community, and as a school district to ensure that our children are safe and feel safe when they are in our buildings. So let me begin by turning it over to Chris Pelletieri. Chris, if you wouldn't mind, starting us off.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Certainly. So before we get started, you often hear from me about IB, NYPD, iPads, curriculum matters. None of that matters without providing for the safety and security of our students and our staff, and we recognize that. That is the single most important thing that we do on a daily basis. So you're not going to hear from me tonight about curriculum and matters like that. I'm going to hear more about security. I'm going to jump right in with that. We have currently almost 500 cameras in this district, and we are actually under consideration to purchase more. Robert's going to talk more about that in a little bit. We have 284 interior cameras. We have 191 exterior. We have two license plate readers. Every single car that comes on this campus, we can read their license plate coming and going. Visitors to the building, you may have seen in the past that we obviously want to have a welcoming environment, especially in our elementary buildings. We want as many people to visit and parents to visit and feel welcome. We still want that, but you are going to see changes effective immediately. I know some of these went into position or went into place already. There will be a single designated entry door for all visitors as we move forward. That will be after the initial entry of students. There is buzz-in entry to all buildings now. There are audio intercoms for visitors at elementary schools and the middle school. We can put eyes on every single person that wants to enter our buildings and be able to buzz them in before we allow them into the building. We have sign-in protocols in all of our buildings, including our elementary buildings now, and will be issuing identification tags to all visitors. There are programs, you've seen perhaps, software where people have their ID scanned. It generates a picture of the person and their information. It can be put right on their chest. Again, that is something that we're considering as we go forward, but immediately, we will have visitor passes, IDs, badges, and the like at all of our buildings for visitors. Security measures during the school day. This is an important feature, that all of our classrooms can dial 911 directly. No one has to go to an office. No one has to take out a cellphone. You can dial 911 directly. And in all of our schools, save for covert school, all of our schools would have immediate access to Rockville Center Police Department. Covert school would have access immediately to the Nassau County Police Department. After having conversations with Commissioner Gennario many times over the past several years and as recently as today, he assured us that certainly, once a call went out, his people would be responding as well to covert schools, so that would not be an issue for him. Announcements can be made as well throughout the buildings. So, for example, Mr. Murphy is in the high school. There is an issue at some point in the building. He does not, again, have to get back to the main office to make an announcement that everyone can hear. That can be done through classroom phones. Walkie-talkies are used for communication. For example, we have them throughout our buildings. Our nurses have them. Our principals have them. They are, they can communicate throughout the district. We also have within-building communications. People go out, take students out for lunch or recess. They have a walkie-talkie system as well, where they can communicate back into the building to get an immediate response if there is need for support. All of our buildings have planned off-campus evacuation sites. We're not going to get into details around that, but note that all of our buildings do have these evacuation sites. And parent notifications, whenever there are issues, God forbid, or any concerns that we have, we would notify parents through our system that we have in place already, where we use robo-calls, our own app, the Rockville Center Schools app, any social media that's available to us, and we can push out through email as well. Robert, I think you're going to take the next?
Yep. So in addition to working on getting all of our portables out of here at the high school and having one single building, so students don't have to leave with the last bond issue, some of the other enhancements we did from that bond issue were exterior door replacements in almost every one of our buildings. We've had doors that had trouble closing, had trouble locking. We did replacements of quite a few doors so that we would have a secure outside to all of our buildings. In addition, all of the classroom door locks were upgraded to make sure that every classroom could be locked from the inside, so we don't have an issue of a teacher having to go out into a hallway to try to use a key and fumble with the key to lock the door. They can all be locked from the inside. There are a couple of exceptions to those. In Riverside, in the middle school, there are a couple of rooms that are used for emergency egress to fire escapes, so we're looking at a couple of alternative ways where we can secure those doors in the event of an emergency without locking, using an interior lock. We'll have some other locking device that can be used in those situations. We had talked about the Smart Bond. Dr. Johnson mentioned that. That's something that the state has provided monies for. We have an application which is up at the state right now, but the plans for that are to move forward with that this year. That would provide a video intercom at each of our buildings. We do have audio intercoms at the elementary schools and the middle school. This would be a video intercom, so it would be a complete interaction with the visitor at the door. It would have a camera right at the face level, so you could get a good picture right now. We do have cameras on all of our entrances, so we can see who is at all of our entrances. If the person in the building is trying to identify that person, they can just have the person turn sometimes. It's not so easy. This would provide a camera right out front where everybody would see it. They would know where the camera is. They can look into the camera, and our staff on the inside will be able to identify them and communicate with them. A new locking system on all of our exterior doors. We have, the system we have now with our swipe cards to get into the building for the staff is getting to be a very old system. We need to upgrade that to make sure that we do not have downtime and that our staff do have access when need be, and that those doors are locked all the time when necessary. Our camera system, we're going to upgrade that to include some new cameras for some of the areas around the buildings that we don't have complete coverage for. In virtually all places on our buildings, we do have cameras which access hallways, stairwells, exterior sides of the building, all doors. There are a couple of spots that we could use a little bit more coverage, so we are getting some additional cameras for that. We're also getting software upgrades. We maintain records through the video cameras. Depending on the camera and the activity on the camera, we can record from anywhere from a minimum of about two weeks up to about nine months. So we're looking for some upgrades to the servers so that that security may be maintained for additional lengths of time, and also so we would have quicker access, and we don't have any cameras going down or the server systems going down, so that we have constant access for them. We're also talking about having automated license plate readers. Right now, we do have the ability to identify license plates as they come and go from the high school campus, but what an automated license plate reader would do would be to automatically track every license plate that comes in so that there's always a record of who comes in and goes out. Right now, it's just, we have to go back. We'll search. You can find out exactly what the plate is, but we don't have an automated record of who's coming and going from our campus. Some other considerations we have is to have an automated visitor identification. This would be a system that would take a picture of your driver's license or photo ID, would scan that into a system. A visitor pass could be printed with a picture on it, and then anytime you would return to the building, would not have to provide the ID again. Your ID would be in the system. You provide your name. Your ID would come up with your picture. We verify that it's you, and then you can go into, get a pass, and go to wherever your destination is within the building. We've looked at a social media monitoring software company. That's a company that would look at the various social media that goes on around Rockville Center, would search on key terms such as "Southside" or "Rockville Center," compare it with other keywords like "guns" or "bombs," different things like that, use our area codes to try to gain anything that might be going on through social media, to do some sort of a tracking that would be tracked back to us, might be able to give us a heads-up in case there's some buzz or some discussion going on locally about somebody who's trying to plan something or do something around Rockville Center. We're talking about having a security desk in every building. Right now, we have one at the high school, the middle school, and the Hewitt School. We want to make sure we have one in all of our buildings, and we have those entry points, single points of entry monitored, and a security presence there. So in addition to those security desks, we want security guards. That's one of the things we're looking at, to have those in every building, one in each elementary school. Security guards we have in the district, we have five of them at the middle school, 10 of them at the high school. We have one at night here at the high school, and we have roving security that goes around the district. So this would be, we provide some additional security. All of our security guards are trained and licensed security guards. They go through training and refresher training every year for different changes in security practices and protocol, and they work with our building administration to keep our building secure. And... secure and to follow different protocols as they may be. We're looking at an E-911 emergency notification server. This is something that when somebody dials 911 from any phone in the district, in addition to identifying the building location, where that call is coming from, it would identify the room and the phone from that placed that call. In addition, it would send alert notifications to key members of administration to let us know that a 911 call has been placed from a certain, from a certain location within the district. Anterooms in each building, we're looking at having a secure place as visitors come to the building that we can do that identification of them and verify that they are who they say they are and the business that they have in the building before actually letting them into the building. So, we're looking at that in all of our buildings. I don't think any of our buildings right now have a secure location right now. They really come in, at the middle school, the high school, they come up to a security guard. At the elementary schools, they have communication with the main offices and an individual within the building as to what the reason for their visit is, but then when they're, when they come in, we don't have a way to keep them secure from the rest of the building before we identify them. So, that's why we're looking at anteroom to keep them in a secure location before they enter the building. Security camera access to police during emergencies. We have all of our cameras. We'd like the police to be able to monitor those cameras in the event of an emergency so that they can, if necessary, direct their onsite personnel. So, we're talking about having the police have access to the cameras, so they would be trained, they would be familiar with the cameras, so that if anything did happen at any of our buildings, they would have a police sergeant or similar back at the village police headquarters who would be able to monitor the cameras and be able to communicate directly with the emergency personnel onsite to direct them. So, we'd have one person watching the cameras and in real time be able to direct the people onsite to where different activities or issues are happening within the building. We looked at a doorage or alert system to make sure that we have all of our doors closed and locked. We've tried to make that a priority so that there's one single point of entry in all of our buildings. This would be a system that would go with the upgrade to the door swipe systems and security systems so that if any door is opened up and then propped open for more than a certain period of time, five seconds, 10 seconds, an alarm would go off in the main office with the security guards to let them know that there is a security breach in a certain location. That alert would then disappear once that door is closed, but there would be a record of that door being opened for more than a certain period of time, and we would be able to address that situation right away. Facial recognition software is another technology that's been coming around, so we're not sure exactly how good it is. We're trying to get more information on that, but that might be able, might be something that if it works properly, might be able to identify somebody that may walk into the building who is not a student, not a staff member, and may be able to alert somebody right away if they're trying to walk in with a group of people. That's really what the concern is there, is that as we have arrivals and dismissals, there's lots of people coming and going. That would be something that could track the different people coming into the building. Also, we're looking at exterior labeling of all windows and doors so that, again, emergency responders will be able to identify rooms and doors from the outside as well as from the inside of the building. So, they need to get someplace on the outside so they know exactly where to go.
My turn.
Johnson?
Yes, thank you. We have two slides here that we wanted to share with you about that articulate to some extent the depth of the relationship that we have with our local police department. It's extraordinary. They are extremely cooperative with us. We have an extremely good working relationship with both the commissioner and the various leadership people in the Rockville Center Police Department. But most importantly, the person that we've come to really know and appreciate in the school district is Officer DeLuca, who is in fact a youth officer assigned to the district. He really has gone out of his way to make himself known to our students, certainly works cooperatively with us on a variety of different projects. And quite frankly, I was meeting, on the very day that the Parkland shooting was taking place, we were in a meeting in the boardroom across the street with Lieutenant Romance and with Nick DeLuca, and we were talking about things that we had on the planning board when this tragedy struck. Just, I just want to just tell you a couple of things that we do right now without going into a whole lot of detail on it, but we do work collaboratively, work, and I certainly work with and members of my staff work collaboratively with the police commissioner. And then, the executive staff of the police department also work with me, with members of my staff. The youth officer works with our administrators in the building, particularly the middle school and the high school. Just recently, by the way, just so those of you who may or may not notice, there have been police cars patrolling our schools on a more frequent basis, and they find their way onto our campus, and we certainly appreciate that presence. We have a district-wide emergency response plan, even though it is developed here within the school district and in fact reviewed by our board and by various people, including some parents. It is also reviewed by the police department and by the commissioner of police. So, we work again collaboratively with them on in fact ensuring that the plan that we have in place meets all of the standards that he would expect us to have in place within our school district. Interestingly enough, what we also are very sensitive to, and the police have become exceedingly sensitive to in recent years, is their response to persons with disabilities. And so, I can tell you that that's on their radar screen. They are working to in fact get their officers trained, so that in the event that they do respond to the building and there is an emergency underway, they have been trained in advance on how it is that they can in fact respond or should be responding to our students who in fact may exhibit behaviors that are somewhat unusual in an emergency situation. So, we could go to the next slide. The day that I mentioned to you that we were meeting with Romance and DeLuca, the interesting thing was is what we were looking at was some of the changes that we are looking to implement here within the school district. One of the things that we want to do is that in the event that there is an emergency, our staff quite frankly in the buildings, our faculty and the staff in the buildings probably don't know what to expect of the police officer when they arrive on the scene. So, what we were talking about was then inviting the police officers to go to faculty meetings and explain exactly what it means if they were to arrive on the scene of an active shooter and what exactly would be happening in the building, what they could anticipate and expect. So, we're going to be arranging all of that before the end of this school year for one or more of the police representatives who in fact share that information with our staff in the various buildings. We also took a look at what ways in which we could in fact put together active shooter drills with the police. It's a little bit awkward, and it may in fact have to take place during the summertime when in fact we don't have everybody in school. We're not trying to terrify the children in our school by having these drills take place while school is in session, but I think it is very important for both them and for us to know and understand exactly what we can anticipate, what they can anticipate when they arrive on the scene in the event that there was a, an emergency. The other thing that we arranged were walkthroughs in all of our buildings. I believe there are 56 members of the police department. Only a small handful of them really know what the interior of our buildings look like. So, what we want to do is to have all of the officers who work in Rockville Center become much more familiar with what the interior of our buildings. So, again, it gets back to that issue that Robert had mentioned before about swipe cards, making these things available to the police department and enable them to come into the building after hours and in fact familiarize the officers with the interior of our buildings. And the last thing is, is that, you know, one of the issues, and we couldn't figure out how to do it logistically by utilizing any software, is that in the event that the police had to arrive on the scene and they came to the front door of any of the buildings and found them to be locked, how do they get in? So, what we are talking about is providing them what we have, our locking system, for those who may know, is a magnetic locking system, giving them swipe cards so that in fact there is no impediment for their entry into the building at the time that they would arrive in the event that there was an emergency that required them to get into that building immediately. So, those are things that are on the drawing board with the police department. I need to emphasize again how strongly positive it is with them, how cooperative they have been with us, and how much they want us and they to work together on ensuring, again, getting back to that issue that I raised to you earlier, ensuring that everybody feels safe within the Rockville Center community as well as within the Rockville Center schools. So, Mr. Bartels is the chair of our district-wide safety committee, and I've asked him to do the next two slides, so Rob?
Yeah, I actually now chair it with Noreen Leahy. We do co-chair it. There have been changes from the state as to what is required in that district-wide emergency management plan. And what the state has added was some requirements and protocols for mental health training and more emphasis on student involvement and our, and our protocols with students. So, we kind of co-chair that team right now. We are having another meeting next week, but this is something that we have been meeting for a number of years now, reviewing the district emergency management procedures. That is the only thing that's available to the community. We do have building-level emergency management plans, which I'll talk about in a second, but those are proprietary to the buildings. So, in a review of the district plans, we basically look to make sure that the elementary and middle and high school teams are in place, they are meeting, that we do have general responses that are being addressed at all of our levels, and we can and do make recommendations from time to time on some different procedures or protocols that we feel may be appropriate within the district to improve safety and coordination, communication between the buildings and administration and parents. The building-level response teams are run in each building by the principals. They talk about what they are doing within their own buildings, different emergency protocols, evacuations, as we talked earlier, off-site plans. They're all, make sure that they have someplace to go if there is an incident within their buildings. They plan for different emergencies, for lockdowns, lockouts, different types of sheltering drills and evacuation procedures. We do review our emergency protocols with all of our staff and students. It's done with staff at the openings with schools and monthly during faculty meetings. With students, the expectations are reviewed with them at the opening of schools and before and after drills that take place within the building. Some of the different drills that are required, there are 12 drills that are required to be done during the course of the year. I believe all of our buildings probably end up doing more than, more than that. Four of those drills must be lockdown or lockout drills. Eight of them must be evacuation drills, and eight of the 12 drills must be completed by December 31st. So, just some description, a fire is in the event a fire or smoke is detected within the building. A lockout is when there is a threat outside of the school and we need to keep everybody outside, everybody, no visitors are allowed in, so no students are allowed out. Lockdown occurs when there's a threat inside the building and everybody stays in place. So, those are some of the different terms that we use and the drills that are done within the buildings. Noreen?
Yeah, thank you. So, this is a very multifaceted issue, security, and certainly the reflection of what's transpired in the last couple of weeks. And we can't really discuss security protocols without really turning our attention to mental health and to what social-emotional learning initiatives are in place here in the district. Coincidentally, we had planned a presentation on our social-emotional learning curriculum, the board meeting at the end of the March, end of March, which is still going to take place, and I'll go into more depth on all these programs at that time. But tonight, I just wanted to bring your attention to some state initiatives and some protocols that are in place that are relevant to the recent events. As Robert mentioned, there are some changes in the state law regarding mental health, education, and awareness and aspects of how to be incorporated into our emergency response plan. The mental health advocates in the state were aware of many compelling realities some years ago and advocated for public policies to address it. So, they made some changes to state education law, which requires mental health instruction. That followed about five years of legislative policy pushing, and so effective July 1st, 2018, all schools in New York State are required to teach mental health in elementary, middle school, and high school health curricula. So, the details of that and when that occurs is still forthcoming. We'll get more detailed guidance from the state. We did, we were able to get ahead of that somewhat, which I'll explain in a minute. But also included in this mandate is a requirement to educate staff on the signs and symptoms of mental illness in the form of school safety and violence prevention training. We all recognize, the state recognizes, we all recognize, you can't teach facts about mental health and isolation. The student needs skills in problem-solving and conflict resolution and the like, and that's social-emotional learning. Last summer, just coincidentally, and this is a part of us kind of getting ahead of this curve, because of knowing this legislation had come through, we had a curriculum-writing project. Dr. Landis, Dr. Wood, Dr. Chase, and Dr. Stegman wrote our curriculum, and they covered a few aspects that relate to this new legislation. First, they did a comprehensive review of all the social-emotional learning that took place in the district already. And for years and years, we've been including things like Second Step at the elementary school level, middle school advisories, high school. We used to have actually courses that address this. We have groups and guidance and whatnot. But they looked at all the programs that we used, and they determined that what the most effective ones would be to create a continuum of social-emotional learning from K to 12. A couple of years prior to that, Dr. Johnson had brought into the district a pilot program called Sanford Harmony, and it's proven to be a very effective social-emotional learning curriculum, which is in place in K-1, is now going into effect in grades 2 through 5. The teachers in K-1 have been trained, the PPS staff for 2 to 5 have been trained, and kits are in place, and the training of teachers in 2 to 5 is in the works. Prior to that, in elementary, we had something called Second Step, which was character education. You recall the requirement when DASA came in in 2012 to implement character education as well? So, there's some overlap, and this kind of enhances what we were already doing for that as well. In the middle school, Dr. Chase identified a program, also a program called Second Step, which is a continuation of the elementary program, which we've purchased and put in place and takes place in our advisory, extended advisories in the middle school. And at the high school, they've developed a series of social-emotional learning lessons that will be conducted as push-in lessons in either English or US history, English or history classes, because all kids take those subjects. They've also brought in speakers. In December, we had Dr. Flood, who had a wonderful presentation on developing relationships in schools. And there's also some universally implemented education in the form of morning news and announcements and so forth. The psychologists also wrote the training protocol for staff, and although the mandate to educate staff doesn't take place until this July, we started last fall with faculty training staff on signs and symptoms of mental illness, and we will continue to do that every year going forward. Finally, the Rockville Center has two district-certified psychologists, who are also certified in crisis prevention intervention, or CPI. CPI is essentially a way to de-escalate situations that might result in violence. So, when we see students start to get agitated or emotional or angry or aggressive, these staff members are learning how to de-escalate those situations. So- So between Chris and I, we were able to send two psychologists to the training, and they are in turn turnkey-training our staff. We have a very deep social-emotional support staff, our PPS staff. We have 10 building psychologists in our buildings, and also one is, works in St. Agnes as well. We have seven social workers, nine school counselors, and they're in the middle school and the high school. And I can't, I have to include the nurses in that team as well. Of course, we have nine nurses as well. And they respond to many emergencies. I mean, the worst, of course, if God forbid, something like what happened in Parkland. But day-to-day, our PPS staff is responding to mental health emergencies of one kind or another, self-injurious behaviors, radiations, anxiety, depression, school avoidance, and the like. The social-emotional learning I've already covered, Sanford Harmony, Second Step. But all of this, the programs, the hardware, the software, the door locks, the buzzers, the alarms, the guards, all of it really doesn't matter if we have an established relationships with our kids. And to that, I very proudly say that that has been sort of the bottom-line expectation for our gen ed teachers, our special ed teachers, our PPS staff, our administrators in this district. Our principals have been around, we have experienced principals that have been around, they know our families, they know our kids. Our teachers know our kids. Our special ed teachers know the individual needs of unique learners. Our PPS staff gets to know kids that struggle, and those relationships and maintaining those relationships are, in my opinion, the single most important thing we have to maintain in this district to really protect our kids. That's done, that information is done in a series of meetings that are held continuously in schools. At the elementary level, it's usually IST meetings where they talk about kids struggling academically, emotionally, and other ways. At the middle school and the high school level, that's all of the PPS staff and administrators that have a series of what they call, they either call PPS meetings or RISC meetings. Again, they create action plans to take care of kids that are in harm's way. And finally, we have very, very, very strong relationships with outside agencies. Dr. Johnson already mentioned the police department, also CPS, and PENS are two other tools that we use to try to reach out for help in helping kids that may need additional support emotionally or psychologically.
Thank you very much. Even though Chris pretty much described the procedures that we have in place, I've asked that both the middle school principal and the high school principal just spend a few minutes, just talking a little bit about, because of the unique nature, it's either the two facilities. Sheila, if you don't mind, why don't you go first? And then John?
You did go first, but that was different. So some of the procedures that we have in place at the middle school is that all doors are locked at the middle school, and there's a sign on the doors, which just today went up as hot pink. They used to just be white, but now they're hot pink, that say all visitors must enter through the main door in the front of the school. There's a camera directly over that door. We have security that is sitting at a desk, who when they see someone at the door, they can, they can ring the bell, but security gets up, opens the door, and asks them where they're going, the visitor. Ask them where they're going, what they're doing. They have to sign in. If they're going to go to a guidance, say, or they have a cluster meeting, or they're going to the nurse, the security will call guidance and say, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so is here. And either they'll be sent to guidance, because guidance is expecting them, or guidance will come out, because they're not expecting them, and talk with them, or sent to the nurse or such. Anyone who brings anything into the middle school that they're dropping off for their child, because we are trying to foster independence with the children, we don't immediately call the children down and have them come pick up their stuff. We put it in a crate that's labeled 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, and those items are delivered, and they could include lunch, it could be a softball bat, there's many things that it could be. Those are delivered up to the lunchroom by security during the grade-level lunch, the appropriate lunch. If an iPad is brought in or such, then security calls guidance, and then guidance takes care of getting the iPad to the child. All the students, nobody, they've all been told not to open the doors for anyone. We have swipes on each side of the building, in the back of the building, and all teachers have the swipe cards that they can come in. But the students have been told, and I think they're really pretty good about it, they don't let anyone in the building. We're lucky in the sense that our kids don't go anywhere. They go out the back door and they go to the tennis courts, where we let them play for 19 minutes during lunch. And then we bring them back in, so they could go eat their lunch. So, but the 19 minutes lunch, 19 minutes study, it works, it's been working for years, we'll continue with that. But they also, they're not leaving to go somewhere known. If someone comes in and they're picking up their child, we prefer that a note is sent in in the morning, and then attendance arranges with security, and then the child comes down at the appropriate time, and then there's a pass where they have to be signed out from the attendance office as well as the front desk. Everyone signs in, everyone signs out, and every visitor wears a really big red sticker that says South Side Middle School and says where they're going. I think that's what we do. Good? Okay, thank you.
John?
The following is a series of modifications that, and enhancements to those protocols that were already in place in what is and will continue to be a very well-organized, very orderly, and very attentive school for things such as hall duties, which is prescribed for all teachers and some aides, where we always have an adult presence, as well as our security guards in the hallway, and all students sign in and out of bathrooms, so that there's a correct place and space to be at all times in the high school. As you've heard from correspondence from me, if you are a high school parent, we are bolstering both the arrivals to the schools and the departures. This week, we have sent notifications to staff and students that if they do not have an updated ID badge, that they need to get one. Tomorrow and Friday, all students during physical education classes will have an opportunity to get one if they, God forbid, don't know where theirs is, because effective Monday, all faculty and students must photo ID to get into the building. Effective immediately, there are two points of entry to the building. One is one of the doors at the colonnade, where the buses arrive, and the other one is what the students call the flagpole entrance or the main south entrance. Those are the two doors that are open in the morning. Both are manned by security, and there is an administrative presence there too, especially this week. Effective Monday, all students will enter through one of those two entrances and must show a photo ID in order to enter into the building. If a student does not have them, their photo ID with them, they will be escorted to the attendance office, where they will be positively ID'd before they are allowed to enter the building. The same applies for staff, and that is from 7:00 until 7:58, when first period begins. At 7:58, upon the start of first period, the only entrance into the building will be the south entrance, which is by the flagpole. All other doors remain locked and will not be opened under any circumstances except for, under the event of an emergency. All staff members, including high school personnel and other faculty, must photo ID in order to access to the building. All visitors will be buzzed in from that south entrance. Upon entering the building, there'll be two, there are two options exist, one of which is if the parent is dropping anything off for their son or daughter, they will go to the left of the attendance office and drop it in. The second option is if they do have to enter the building, there'll be two protocols, one of which will be to see if they are on a pre-arranged list of people who already have appointments that day, in which case they will show photo ID, confirm that appointment, under which case they can enter the building. If they do not have a pre-arranged appointment, the person that they're contacting will be contacted. Again, they show photo ID, will be given a visitor's pass, and then be allowed to enter the building. Nobody with an unannounced appointment or has, doesn't have a pre-arranged appointment will be allowed to enter the building. We understand that there are inconveniences, but we think that the ends justify the means under the present circumstances. Again, this is, this is as well as the existing enhancements that we've made to security. We're making announcements on a day-to-day basis to students, reminding them of not just the photo IDs, but subtle things that aren't so subtle anymore. For instance, under no circumstances are they allowed, should they allow anyone into this building who is knocking on a door other than those two entrances. It will be treated as a disciplinary action from now on. They are not allowed to exit the building under any circumstances, using any door except for those two. Of course, there are exceptions to this rule. For instance, gym teachers will be using one main entrance at the back of each gym, but the students will enter and leave with the physical education teacher, who will then make sure that that door is locked when they're outside during physical education classes. And just for further enhancement, by 7:00, there are nine security guards who are on campus and present. By 8:00, there are 11 security guards. This is as well as the administrative personnel, who are in the hallways, and up until recently are also manning the exit doors to make sure that everyone who should be here is here and is attending regularly. Starting Monday, the administrative presence will be accentuated in the entrance points to make sure that the protocols that we are now establishing are being followed and in place.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Murphy, just to confirm, all, all visitors must have a photo ID?
Yes, sir.
What will you do if somebody comes and says, what will be a protocol?
If it's someone who, if it's someone who I don't know, I'm sorry, you can't come into the building.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Just also following up, what's been our students' reactions?
Okay, they are 14, or 15, okay. So it's, oh, man, it's kind of cool that he's doing that. And it wasn't me doing that, this is, this is a decision that was reached collectively, as Dr. Johnson said. None of these decisions were rash, nor were they formulated in the last week. We've been developing these over the course of weeks and months. Students are relieved. They are. They need time to be themselves again, and I think this affords them a level of security. We know it's safe now, they feel that it's safe as well. They'll be inconvenienced. It's, we all are going to be, get over it.
We all are.
Thank you.
John, if you don't mind, I'd like to conclude.
Sure.
Just a couple of things.
Dr. Johnson, are we, are we asking Mrs., an elementary teacher to come up, or an elementary principal? Excuse me?
No, I don't think so. I thought that what we would do is have Mr. Pelletieri at the opening provide the procedures, unless one of them would like to go to the microphone and share. They're here really to respond and answer any questions. The procedures that were described earlier by Mr. Pelletieri are those which are in place in each of our elementary buildings at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
So what I'm prepared to do tonight, we're living through some very, very difficult times. It certainly has pushed us to accelerate many of the discussions that we had underway, where in some cases we were looking at implementing certain things in, in the next and upcoming school year or later. But I think, given the emergency atmosphere, the sense of, of, I think, the emergency notion that people have, and the sense of insecurity that many of our members of the community, and to some extent, some of our kids have felt, what I would like to do is to move forward with some of the recommendations, and instead of considering them for next year, do them if we can immediately. One of them is to purchase immediately the automated identification readers. These are available, and what essentially they were, as they were described earlier, it's an automated system. It is a, an opportunity to read somebody's license, get a picture ID in your system, and then generate a name tag with the picture on the name tag. So we'd like to do that immediately. The second thing I, that we've been talking about for a long time, and continues to rise in almost every conversation that I have, either with members of our staff here in the school district, with parents, or with the police, and it is the idea of having security guards in our elementary buildings. It was something that we had planned on putting into the budget for next year, but I, I know that, that given the tenor of what has been going on in the world around us, I would like the board to consider it for implementing right now. So the, the last thing that continues to come up in discussions that we have, certainly internally, and it's been back and forth on, on the necessity, but I believe that, that given, again, the world in which we are living, is the whole concept of anteroom. And so what we realized in this past week, as a matter of fact, not this past week, but the past few months, because we had actually the architects come in and work with us on it, is that in all but two of our buildings, we have a double set of doors. I don't know, I suspect most of you are familiar with the interior, maybe not of every building, but certainly of the building your children attend, and except for the middle school and Hewitt, we have two sets of doors at the front of each building. So that what we are going to do, or what we are hoping to do for this upcoming September is place money in the budget in order to replace all of those interior doors, which when they were placed in the buildings, when they were constructed, it was to keep the heat in the building and provide you an opportunity to walk essentially into a vestibule before you came into the building, so that the cold would not follow you into the building. We believe that each and every one of them can operate as an anteroom in each of our buildings, and that's what we intend to do. So we're going to start working on that immediately also, and even though that's going to require some work, we can't build those doors ourselves, we're going to have to work with our architects and construction firms. I am confident that if we begin that work ASAP, we will have most, if not all, of that work done for the opening of school in September. That leaves two buildings, the middle school. As you know, and as Sheila described it, people don't enter easily into the middle school. We have people stationed in that rather large lobby. Many of you who have been in that building know, it's a wonderful facility, and we don't want to change the character, if we don't have to, of that lobby. But nevertheless, the door that people enter, we can create a small glass enclosure and make it, again, an anteroom into which someone coming from outside would enter before, in fact, they actually came into the building. So that is one of those projects that we intend also to pursue. And the last is at Hewitt School. Those of you who are parents of children at Hewitt School know that there is no second set of doors. Once you walk through those doors, you're in the hallway, and you're right there in the classroom space. So again, we have been working with Mrs. Preike. We have visited the building on a number of occasions and have concluded that, at the very least, one of the things that we can do, and for those of you who are in the Hewitt School, know that we probably already have an anteroom. We just have to convert that space. And as you walk into the front door, that's currently open right now, immediately to your left as you're coming in, there's a doorway. That single doorway goes into a small office that is now currently part of the library. And that can act as an anteroom. There's a door from there into the hallway. We can invite people into the building at that point and, in fact, create that anteroom immediately. There's a reason for doing that. In every single one of our buildings, we have to understand that there is a barrier between the entry at the beginning of the school and the location of classrooms, except one building, and that's Hewitt. So by creating this left turn into this office space, we have, in fact, created essentially what we have within the other facilities in our school district and provided them the opportunity of having this anteroom. We can do that. We don't need to go outside and have that done. So that's something I can get done, probably within the next few months. And what we're targeting is the next vacation, and in fact, we may be able to reconstruct and reconstruct that area to, in fact, create that facility immediately. So those are my recommendations for consideration by the board at this time. And I'd like to end, again, where I began, with thanks. All I can tell you is that the meetings that I've had with parents... All I can tell you is that the meetings that I've had with parents, both parents from the Hewitt School, who have given me plenty of their time, the parents, the PTA council, who just on Monday spent two hours with me reviewing all of what's happening within the school district, and the many letters, the many emails, the many messages that we have received have been absolutely incredible in helping us understand the depth of your feelings about your children in our schools. I can't tell you how much we appreciate the work that you have done, and the fact that you're sitting here today is, again, symbolic of the concern that you have for your children. We share it. And I think, to some extent, we're able to solve some of those problems now, and if not, we need to continue to hear from you and continue to work together on making our place just not be safer, but feel safer for our kids. So I really thank you all for the time and effort that you have put in to help us understand better what it is that we can do for your children.
Thank you, Dr.
I'm embarrassed that you say that was not, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Robert, Norine, and Chris, for all the, you know, the extra help. Thank you, the principals, for all your input and the planning that we have, we're putting on the table at this point for the community. I'd like to open the floor to any...
Can I ask you a couple of questions I could ask?
Sure.
First, Robert, on the automatic ID readers.
How many of these are we looking to purchase?
One for each building.
Maybe Mike Anderson can answer the next part, since I saw him in the back. Mike, are these, is this equipment scalable anyway? Do you know?
Certainly. I think initially we're looking at one for each building, and we can go increase that as we...
And they're running on software, so is the software going to be upgradable or is it...
By the way, just so you know, the mystery man in the back of the room, he's the director of our technology in the school. Mike, do you want to stand up?
Mike, can you come to the mic also?
Right.
So everybody here and everybody in TV can hear you.
You didn't know you were going to be put on the screen.
It's on.
Okay. What's the question?
Is it scalable?
Scalable, yes.
It's networkable. It's all networked, so all of the data that's collected will be backed up.
And software upgradable?
Certainly.
As new mods come out by the manufacturer, by software engineers? Okay.
And how long does that take to get put in place?
Well, a lot of that has to do with the vendor, right? All the vendors right now are very busy, as you can imagine, but we have a very good working relationship, and I think, once it's approved by the board and the funds become available, we could look, you know, probably two months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you say it's networked, is the data shared between our schools? So if I go to the high school and give them my ID, when I go to the other schools, do they know who I am?
No. No.
Can they be linked?
I don't believe that the data is shared in that way. It's just backed up to a server.
But once you've been in a building, you don't need to re-present?
That's correct. That's correct. Once you go in the second time, you give your name, they'll look it up, they'll see your picture, confirm that it's you, and print out your visitor badge with the picture on it.
Okay. Thank you.
How long does that process take, roughly? You know, once you, you know, is the printing, is it a long thing? Is it...
I think it takes about 30 seconds for the initial scan and print of the visitor badge.
Okay, so nothing time-consuming?
Right. 30 seconds.
Okay, good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, Norine, you touched on, and I think a really big thing that we've talked about for years is if you see something, say something. So I guess, actually, I really want to direct this to the principals, since you're here and we want to hear from you. How does that happen in your buildings? And also, on another note, like, how are your students? I know Mr. Murphy sort of mentioned something, but how are they feeling?
Yeah, neither did Mike, Mr. Murphy.
It's hard to categorize. It's hard to categorize, you know, 1,100 kids in one...
Understand.
So every student is processing and dealing with it in very different ways, just as when we're doing a lockdown drill, you know, we've come to this stage now, we have to personalize these things. As a rule, students are coming to grips with the newfound reality and are comforted to a certain level by the changes in place. But this is going to be a slow maturation and a development process. I think we're fortunate enough to have a very trusting environment, and there are a lot of different avenues. For instance, Dr. Lady mentioned the social-emotional learning. Part of the public service announcements that we've been doing have introduced students to staff that they normally wouldn't interact with, the social worker, the school psychologist, the guidance counselor, to provide them avenues and segues into the adult community so that they know when a friend or somebody else, which is a regular occurrence, a friend isn't feeling well, she's not right, could you help them? So there's that open rapport that already exists that is so important. This is, and I'm not trying to put a positive spin on this, becoming a real collaborative effort, whether we wanted it to or not, that the students and the faculty do feel a shared camaraderie in this regard, in terms of keeping their collective safety in place. So if there is a positive coming out of this, it is that notion that we are really in this together, and also that open dialogue is actually becoming even more helpful than it was before.
We're going to hold, we'll open the floor up in a few minutes, okay?
I have a question also. What plans does the district have in place for any sort of supportive walkout? There's national movements and local movements trying to get going. I'm just curious if we have anything underway and what type of, speaking of camaraderie, that we could build upon that with our students?
We're viewing it as a demonstration or memorial, and quite frankly, what John and I are going to do, I have a meeting with the teachers and with the students on Friday. Our concern is, first of all, they have a free speech right that needs to be protected. They understand that. We understand that. But in addition to that, we have an obligation to make sure that whatever happens, happens safely. So what we need to do is to coordinate and work with our students and with our faculty to ensure, we don't know that there will be 100% participation, so that there may be kids who will stay behind in classrooms. Those classrooms have to be manned by people who are then providing instruction during that period of time. Now, remember, it's supposed to last for 17 minutes. There are lots of options that we have open to us. I've also been in touch with the mayor and with the police, who are more than willing to work with us, and Kathy Backsley, I don't know if Kathy's in the room tonight, but at any rate, the deputy mayor, the mayor, and probably the first meeting she's missed in ages. Nevertheless, you know, we are going to work together to ensure that the perimeter of the campus here at South Side High School is, in fact, safe. You know, it could be a very vulnerable time, and if somebody wants to harm our kids, that would be a time when they would be all outside. So we're going to make every effort to ensure that they have an opportunity to express themselves appropriately, and yet, at the same time, we want to make sure that everybody's safe. Now, what has come up, and Sheila is going to join us for that meeting on Friday as well, and I'm not sure whether or not there is going to be a similar interest on the part of some of our kids at the middle school, but we have to be prepared to deal with that.
Thank you. I have one more question for Mr. Recupero. We were talking about portables on the high school. I know Wilson is the only building left with portables, so if you could just tell us what the safety protocol for kids being moved from main building to the portables, if there's somebody stationed there at times, locking, that type of thing.
Somebody's in the portables at all time. There's therapists out there, they're stationed out there in their office. I have radios out there, handheld walkie-talkies, as well as a full telephone system, and I don't have security guards out there, but the children are going in and out to go into the portable. I have four kindergarten classes that have specials out there. I have therapy sessions, OT and PT are out there, and you have either individuals or small groups who are escorted. They're all escorted. And, what did I say, kindergarten preps also, and art class, okay? Art starts out there, and she has three or four classes a day out there. So I'd like an addition on the building. We could do it on the south side. Be terrific. But they're as safe as can be. We do everything we can. I go out there, I check it every day, making sure the doors are locked. They tend to leave that one of those doors open, I go right out there and close it on them. Yes. There's air conditioning and heat. Yep.
All right, I'd like to open the floor to anybody who would like to come up and speak to, speak about security. Please give us your name and address.
I'm Jordan Sparra, 32 Park Lane. My kids go to Wilson. Mr. Recupero, you guys didn't mention anything about, like, bulletproof glass. Have you considered that, maybe on the first floors? Or, I know you mentioned security at the school.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm glad to bring that up. When we replace the doors, one of the things that we've already spoken to our architects about is the possibility of having that glass on the interior doors bulletproof.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, because I had failed to mention it.
Jeff Greenfield, Huber Court, citizen taxpayer. Dr. Jay, thank you for your very comprehensive presentation, and thank you for hearing the community in the unfortunate circumstance of the time. I just returned from South Florida. No matter how bad you hear the reports up here, what you hear and see from the people down there is incredibly bad, and I never want to see it happen in my community. So are you posting this online for people that aren't here today?
Yes, yeah, this will be online, yes.
And a few observations. You talked about 911 from the rooms. I think we should talk about 766-1500, which is the RVC PD desk. 911 goes through Nassau County, and there may be a delay.
Oh, I'm glad you say that. Okay, let's make this very clear, because this is something that is a, something that is unique to Rockville Center. When you dial 911 in any of our classrooms or on any of our phones in Rockville Center, you are talking immediately, not to an operator, but to the dispatcher in Rockville Center.
It goes to Rockville Center?
Goes directly to, no, to the dispatcher.
Right.
So that, in the event that there is an emergency that requires immediate response, that's one of the reasons why we have under two minutes as the response time in our schools. It is that 911 goes directly to the dispatcher.
Okay.
That goes directly to the cost, and then they're rolling probably within 10 to 15 seconds.
So the money we're paying on a surcharge for 911 on our phone bills is working right, that it goes that way?
Yes.
Okay, glad to hear that.
We have to solve the covert problem.
Okay, well, that's a separate...
And we're working on that.
Okay. But I'm glad that's taken care of. How much in state dollars have we applied for, for security enhancements through that governor's initiative?
About half a million dollars.
Is that enough to do the job?
It's enough to do that job, but there was another $400,000 that we wanted to put in in order to deal with further enhancements, including, by the way, the creation of anti-rooms.
Right.
We're going to go forward with that. We can't wait for the state. We're still waiting on the state to approve the first project.
Well, I understand there's a big backlog with the state.
Yes.
And we shouldn't wait. I know this community, if you need a million dollars and you put a bond issue, it'll pass, and I urge you to consider that. The community responds, and they are taking security seriously. I listened for the past six months at school board meetings, like you did at the school board, where parents got up here insecure about the security, especially in the elementary schools, and they will pass a bond issue. Get your numbers in line, put it on the ballot, and we'll get it passed, right? I think that's the feeling here.
In all honesty, Jeff, I think we can place it, see, a capital, Robert, you may want to explain this, we can put a capital line in the budget. We don't have to go through a bond issue to do this.
Oh, okay.
And quite frankly, when we talk about the doors, there's going to be a line in the budget that will be utilized to pay for those doors. Robert, why don't you take a minute and just explain it?
We have $800,000 in the upcoming budget. We had $800,000 in this budget, $800,000 in next year's budget, which is a line in the budget that we're using for repairs, for ongoing repairs, in addition to the work that we had from the bond issue. The difference is, anything that's in capital lines, whether it's in a budget line or debt service in the budget that comes from a bond, are all outside the tax cap. So what Dr. Johnson's saying, if we needed to put a million dollars, $2 million, $3 million in, we could put it right into the budget and...
That's what I was going to ask, Robert, about the tax cap era, that if we bonded and the money's cheaper, rather than operating, how does it affect the tax cap?
Right. That will, it would be done that way. You could put it right in the budget and borrow it that way, where you have the money within the budget to pay for it.
If we, and also if we bond, we have to go through state approval. It's years out. Architects drawing, state approval, and, you know, and then coming to terms with what we're going to do. If we're willing as a community to do this out of the budget, then it's our choice of when we can do that.
Okay, good.
We're going to try to bypass that entire system, Jeff, and consider these replacement doors and just move forward. I think, but we can't sit on our hands on this.
I agree.
We really cannot.
I'm glad to hear we're proactive.
We've been working on a strategy to make sure that we get it done and done it as quickly as we possibly can.
The Limerick School District, where I'm also citizen taxpayer, a year ago had a bond issue, and they had insecurity enhancements, and they had to go to Assemblyman Curran to go to the state, because a year later, the state hasn't approved it. It's unconscionable, and their excuse is, we don't have enough personnel. That's unacceptable in today's environment.
All right, if you want to know, our smart money bond is tied up upstate, because the woman who's going to review it is out of maternity. So are, we can look at that money...
If she doesn't come back to work, we're out of luck. We've got to have an insurance policy out there. I smell an insurance opportunity here.
They have to hire somebody, train them, and put them in the position. So the state is, you know...
All you could say about that is, oivee. If that's one employee is holding up the whole state on the swipe card system that we're going to install, the enhanced swipe card, is it record each person entering and going through?
Yes.
Yes.
But can we do it both ways? Is that, I know other systems out there. So you want to check people in as well as checking them out? So you account for everybody?
If they swiped in and it swiped out, they, we could account for them, but...
You have to have it on both sides.
Right.
And you can't force people to swipe out because...
No, I understand. The swipe police can't be out there. I understand.
Why, no, not the swipe. You have to let people leave.
No, but it makes it a little more accountable, if you could keep track of it, if you need it.
Couldn't put a pad on the inside and tell our employees that's what they have to do, if that's something we're interested in.
It has, I can tell you that we investigated that a number of years ago, when we actually looked into this one and enhancing the system we have right now. It just doesn't work.
Okay.
I wish it, I wish it, I wish there was an easy answer to that. There are so many different swipe systems right now. It is so contingent upon cooperation of the people in your system, and there is no failsafe system. But I, we understand what you're saying. We need to know who's not in the, who's not in the building.
Right.
I agree.
So, and we have to treat every building equally, and we have to treat the elementary as serious a threat as it could be up here on this campus, even so this is much different. I think you should put license plate readers in each of the schools so that we can really track if we need to be, for this or for any other reason. The technology and the expense isn't as great as it used to be on license plate readers, and you should review and think that. The only logistics, I guess, would be where to place it, at least in the parking lot as cars enter, because you want to know what cars are coming in and out. And if you can get it where it can read the drop-off areas, that might be good, too. But you should look at that. And the camera, one of the big issues down in Parkland was the delay on the camera. I can't believe that. Are we in real time here?
Yes, we're in real time. We have no delay.
Oh, okay. And another question that's in today's news... And another question that's in today's news day and elsewhere is the issue of armed security officers. What is our position with respect to that? We have some retired law enforcement people on our security staff that are trained for that. Do we have a position on that? I'm not sure. I'm advocating one way or another.
Up until this point, we're not anxious to see guns brought into our buildings.
I'm not excited for that either. I just want to know what our position was.
If we can solve the problem without bringing guns into, look, we're going to make every effort to make our schools safe.
I think you are.
I just fear having guns in our building. We have a kind of a little adage that we use, don't solve a problem with a problem.
Okay.
That could be a bigger problem than the problem we're trying to solve. We're trying to keep danger out. If we bring it into the building, there is always the possibility that gun can be used inappropriately.
Agreed. I just want to know what our position was. And especially since there's so much on this today, especially from the NRA.
I saw the article, yes I did, Jeffrey.
Yeah, and the NRA to me, to me means those initials stands for Never Write Always. That's what NRA stands for in my mind.
All right, but let me just say that there was a gun on site in Florida.
Well, yes.
Whatever, it was on site. What we worry about all the time is getting appropriate police presence here as quickly as we possibly can. So in our efforts in working with the police department and developing this 911 system that we have in place and accelerating by working with Mike Anderson, with the police department on ensuring that there's, we short circuit the entire process and go right, right directly to the dispatcher, we can get people rolling to our buildings within 10 to 15 seconds and to our buildings within two minutes. So we believe that that, and by, again, getting back to the swipe card issue, facilitating their entry into the buildings, we're looking at response time and I must tell you, in working with the commissioner and with his, his officers, we actually sit down and measure time in seconds in terms of how long it takes somebody to get from one location to another and into our buildings and through our buildings. So I mean, it's, it's not that we have ignored that, but the problem is getting appropriate response to the location where there is an emergency and getting them there as quickly as possible with enough, and I hate to say this, firepower to disable whoever it is that is in fact taking on our buildings. God forbid that this should ever happen.
Anybody that lives in Rockville Center will never quarrel with the Rockville Center PD response time, here or anyplace else in the village. So that goes without saying. And it, and your collaborative effort with them is to be commended. But I just have one last thought for future consideration. I think you've done a great job. And my thought is no way to disparage the work done so far. But there, I'm reading about outside law enforcement agencies and security firms that are doing independent assessments, just in case you might have missed something, you haven't thought of something, or even our police didn't. So I urge you to look into that and to consider that, just if for no other reason, to validate everything we've done to date. And I think, again, I think you've done a great comprehensive job, as always.
Jeff, I don't feel in any way disparaged whatsoever, but you need to know, by the way, that Mr. Bartels and I meet regularly with consultants from outside.
Right.
Again, we hear from parents on a regular basis. We take notes. We review with these consultants what it is that we could possibly do to adjust what we do within our buildings. I would say they're not policemen, but they are, one of them is a nationally recognized consultant and the other one works for BOCs and has in fact worked very closely with the police departments. And I think we have the best in Rockville Center. We work with the police directly.
We were the leader back in the day when you started licensing and training other security officers at our communities.
By the way, they took that away from us, you know that.
I understand. That's unfortunate.
Yes.
You made a little cottage industry out of that.
We did, we had our own little business.
It was not a terrible thing that, we made a few dollars on that.
But, wait, we still, we still.
We can't fingerprint, but we still do the training.
Yeah, we're not allowed, we used to have a fingerprinting operation here, we don't do that anymore, but we still train.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, could I just, I was getting up to get in line. A very practical question and then a observation, that's a very positive encouraging, encouraging word, hopefully. I mean, I know it is. The practical question is thinking of me myself, like, I followed everything so far. I under, it's, I'm understanding that there's a card that as a parent, we're going to, that's all I want to know is what's the process? Like if I come down here to bring something for my son, you know, from here on, which sounds like Monday is a big day going forward, whole new thing, but do you get what I, what is the, what am I, what is my responsibility as a parent?
I think Mr. Murphy knows who you are.
And what's it going to look like real quick?
Right.
No, but I mean, no, seriously, I want to be doing it by the book if I come.
Right now, what we want you to do is to sign in.
Uh huh, sign in.
And.
Present the photo ID. Oh, so we're not going to get another kind of credit card card?
No, 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 no. What we're looking to do in the future is to make a record of your license so that you don't have to show it every time that you come in. We can then go to the software that we will have, it will pop up on the screen in front of us and we can then generate a tag that has your picture ID on it from that day forward. So that should you come back a second time, we will always have you on, essentially on file for that year.
Okay, well, I'm going to just add a third thing that I wasn't necessarily going to add, but sitting here thinking, I was thinking of the, I follow the news very carefully. You know, the point is about, wait, I don't want to lose the idea. Right, when, if, you know, thinking the whole crime scenario out, don't worry, I'm not going to be alarming, I'm not giving any, you know, we all are thinking all the scenarios out, from what we've seen on TV. So what, when I heard about the license plate and all this fab, everything is great to me. I'm not a law enforcement person, but then again, my great grandfather was a policeman in Germany. But anyway, what, what, so I think about these things. My question is, so we could all even understand better, if someone, let's say, I guess I'm thinking, didn't think it all out, but if it was an out of state license plate, I don't even know if that guy in Florida had a car involved, I don't happen to know.
He arrived in an Uber car.
What? Oh, okay, well, a whole nother thing, but is there a way that the law enforcement showing up here, and I'm hearing all great stuff again, you know, I don't know, I live in South Hempstead, so I don't have a working interaction with the Rockville Center police, but I'm sure they're doing a good job, from what Jeff said here too. Would there be a way that they can get right on, do they find out who the owner of the car is when the policeman, when you, whoever scans the license plate?
Yes.
Is that a real quick, direct kind of thing that they can, you can say?
Yes.
This guy's from Virginia Beach, we know that, you know, who just left here and he looks very suspicious or, the police, yes, they have that ability. Fabulous, fabulous. Here's my observation that I'm ending on, just actually even my father was the superintendent of Buildings and Grounds for Long Island Lutheran High School. Don't worry, Peter, I'm not getting into a lot of history here. Sorry, but I myself was unlocking doors when to the school, that was a Lutheran school, it's in Brookville. Lu High summer programs, if many people know the summer program. I didn't need to say that, but I think it's a great, but yeah, it's good that I said that because I know what I'm saying. I think it's a very good thing that you can lock classroom, school classroom doors from the inside. Oh, let me add, today, I absolutely was going to say all this, I saw, maybe some of you saw it, happened to be watching CNN when I saw it, the two students, and I recognize the boy, he's definitely in the leadership of when they went to Washington and everything. Student, he may be a student at that Florida school, not positive, but he literally said he was disappointed, he made a couple of, and he named a few politicians, including just all of them, and he was disappointed that, he said in two weeks, they have not passed one gun control measure. If he's totally right about that, that is a little sad, but that's not my point. My point is that he made a comment, and you'll get this, the comparison here, he was disappointed that they still had no doors locking from the inside. He literally said that. So the fact that you guys have already gotten that done, that's a fantastic thing.
Thank you.
Okay, and maybe you can all get an encouraging word out of that. Compared to in Florida, their school, Parkland, or what's the name of the school?
Stoneman Douglas.
Stoneman, right. They still do not have locks on the inside doors, and I'm sure the kids are nervous about that. They were all going back to school today for the first day, and many of them are kind of nervous.
Thank you.
But we have reason to be a lot feeling safer.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Did you get my point, hopefully?
Yes, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tara Darlington. I'm at 208 Morris Avenue. I have two boys at Watson Elementary School. First, Dr. Johnson and members of the board, I'd like to thank you for having this meeting tonight, sharing this information with us was so helpful, and I can speak for myself personally, it really puts a lot of fears at ease and makes me feel a lot better studying my boys to school every day, knowing what's planned for the future and specifically what's on your list of immediate actions that you recommended. What I'd like to ask is to have one more thing added to that list of immediate actions. I'm going to speak specifically about Watson, but it's definitely, to the extent that it's relevant to the other elementary schools, absolutely, I think it should also be implemented there. And that's the use of video intercoms. Specifically, I'm thinking about the Project Great door that's used at Watson. Monday night, a peephole was installed in that door, but previous to Monday night, teachers had absolutely zero visibility when they opened that door, both in the morning and then in the evening hours, which really put our students in a very vulnerable and our teachers in a very vulnerable position. They were clearly blindly opening the door without even knowing who was on the other side. I'm happy that a peephole was installed, it's definitely a step in the right direction. I just think it's, it's the minimum and I don't think anything else that we're doing is the minimum, so I'd like to see if we could do something a little bit better, if we can consider putting that video monitor in right away. It's something, but it's still not great visibility. If there's a glare, they really can't see the person. Well, one of the teachers has to stand on a milk cart just to see out. And you know, every morning that I drop my boys off, it's something that kind of runs through my head. I actually haven't been there since Monday morning, so I haven't seen the new peephole, but the reports I've gotten from other parents and my husband is that it's good, but I think we can do better. So please consider that.
We will.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Waldman, is she here?
Yes.
Is there any other way that Project Great can enter your building? That's the only. It's off the park.
The peephole is very helpful, but I think it really would be great if we could get a video monitor there. It really would, especially at night when they're picking up. I was there tonight and I was with the Project Great people. It's dark there, it's really hard to see. They're very appreciative that the district put the peephole in, but I think that Tara is asking for something that's a good request. I really don't.
Can I, can I tell you that Mrs. Waldman has already brought that to our attention? So she shares the same concern that you do. We're working on it. I'm not sure exactly what the solution's going to look like, but we're working on it. Thank you very much, I really appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Mike, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Is, what's the cost difference, or not, is it easier or quicker to install a camera with a monitor on the inside of that door or some kind of video monitoring system?
It's easier to install a security camera, but it's not, it's not as good a solution. The better solution is to install a video intercom system, which is what we've already discussed.
Well, we actually know.
And for anybody who doesn't, it's a, it's a solid door, so you can't speak through it. So it's not like any, like coming to the window here, so that's, so you can't speak through it.
We really haven't talked about the video monitoring, I mean, it was brought up, but we haven't, we talked about.
But these video monitors, right, Robert, are for the front doors?
Yes.
They're not, they weren't for the, they weren't for the back doors.
They were not for the back doors, they're for Project Great.
Are there other buildings, other Project Greats that have the same issue? Darren says yes. Covert?
No, Covert, I, yeah.
Covert does same issue.
But not yours, yeah, no.
What do you do, Darren?
There's a buzzer, but what happens is they buzz and then they let them in because there's no way to even hear who they are. We have the kitchen door, which we used to enter through, which we stopped them entering through once we offered the hot lunch program. So, I mean, we could make them go to that door to pick up their kids from Project Great and they could see them at the, at the window, but, I mean, we just have to retrain everyone to do that. I would still prefer a buzzer and monitor with that, if we could.
Understandable, but in the, in the immediate future.
Immediate future, we could change that and we could have them do that, absolutely.
It's doable, so can we look into that?
We could do that starting tomorrow, well, starting on Friday, actually.
That, you know, till we resolve the issue?
Sure.
That's a great answer to the solution.
Well, there is, there is one by the kitchen, but the gym door.
I think we might be safer with the video monitor in the long run.
Yeah.
And even a door would take a while to acquire and install.
I like that door, actually. Yeah, I think that's actually a good door, no, I think it's good that we don't have a, yeah, I like that as well.
Nobody else has issues like that?
Riverside, they come in through the gym doors, they're big glass panes, you can see.
Is there a buzzer there or?
There's a buzzer.
So they buzz, someone goes to the door, looks and sees who it is and.
Riverside has the two doors, so couldn't you set up like what you're talking about, you could, you were like in a waiting area before you get the second set of doors for Project Great?
Project Great, they enter through the gym, there's not two doors there.
There's a.
The gym doors have, has one outside, one, a double set of outside doors. They ring the bell, a person from Project Great goes and answers the door. They see the person who's picking up.
Right, there's like a little glass window, but.
Well, no, it's a big, actually, it's, it's, there's plenty of glass to see, it's not a small window.
But there's no, overall, I don't feel like there's any sort of like protocol or system here for any of these schools mentioned, like it's just the Project Great teacher says, oh, we think they know their parent and they let them in, or hopefully soon they'll be able to see them and let them in, but even Riverside, you can see through the window. If they did show me, if I went to pick up my kid and I was like a grandma or someone else, they're not going to knock, right now they don't knock open the door. The teacher would open the door and say, who were you here for?
No, the teacher will speak to you through the door and ask who you are because we have to be notified if someone different is picking up at Project Great. So that's already established ahead of time.
So the.
People don't come randomly, we know that someone's aunt is coming.
Okay.
Okay. Ed Hamilton, 60-seater. I had a son just graduated high school, I had one in high school, one in the middle school, one in the elementary school. So I'm retired, retired NYPD, I did dignitary executive protection overseas, so I might have a little more comfort with firearms. My wife told me not to talk, so.
Is she here?
No, she's not here. I had to, I had to get up because.
We won't tell, right.
I appreciate that.
She's going to see this.
When we mentioned guns in the schools, people clapped. So I was a little uncomfortable with that because if you remember Sandy Hook, the shooter had trouble getting in the building. And the principal and the secretary died watching, waiting for him to get in the building. So the one survivor told a story where all they could do was try and tackle him and he killed him. So one person with one firearm takes him out before he kills 26 people. So when you clap and you're afraid of guns or guns are evil, they're not evil. That's it.
Only the person that uses it the wrong way is wrong.
Hi, Kristen Claudefelter, I'm at 396 Locust Street. I have one in the middle school and a couple in the elementary school. I'm, I also should say I appreciate that we did this tonight. I feel very enlightened about some of what's going on. And my question is more for clarification, being that my kids are at covert. As I'm listening, some of these great proposals and steps that we're taking, it sounds like we're the exception. So I'm looking for clarification. When you talk about the tours that have been given with the police department, and they are looking at the buildings, and the bypassing, it sounds like we're bypassing 911 when we call from the classrooms and it's going straight to the police department. Can you give us as Covert parents more clarification on whether any of these meetings and tours have taken place with the first precinct, or if not, how do we bridge to where we have the access to?
We are working with the Rockville Center Police Department. Just so you know, that when things go through, and we have somebody who works for 911 who used to be on the board, might be able to help us with the answer. The call goes to 911, it goes to an operator, and I believe when it's found out that it is a Rockville Center, it goes immediately following that to the Rockville Center dispatcher. It doesn't go to a dispatcher in the county, it goes to the Rockville Center.
If you're using a regular phone that's mounted in a house or a building, it will go right through Rockville Center dispatcher that's sitting at the desk with the student in there, police jurisdiction. Not subtle.
I understand. Here's what we're looking at, and I know Chris had said it earlier today. The first responders in all likelihood will be the Rockville Center police or the Hempstead police, because they are closer than, to some extent, the first precinct.
Sure.
Officers who might be, who have a larger geographic area to cover. And I'm not trying in any way to disparage any of the work that's done by the Nassau County police.
No, it's just true, it's an enormous precinct.
So what we're trying to do is to become more inclusive with the Rockville Center police, so that they, so I know that they, as a first responder, can get to Covert probably faster than, and we've been assured, by the way, that the Rockville Center police will respond if it goes out as an APB, they will go to Covert School, and they will act in their capacity as a police officer, as a first responder, and go immediately in that building, just as if it was their own jurisdiction, until, I guess, I don't know what else to say, the brass from Nassau County show up and then take over.
Okay.
Command. But up until that point, they will respond. So we're working on the logistics with that. I will tell you that, I will share with Darren, and we'll have a meeting at Covert School one night, and we'll have to have a conversation about that, or we'll do it here at a board meeting. We can't forget Covert School, and it cannot be an afterthought, we understand that.
Okay.
It does present a unique problem, only because of the intersection of the various jurisdictions.
So for the time being, when you do the tours, will Rockville Center PD be touring Covert, or has that already happened?
No, we have to go through, the 911 that we use will go to the county, but as he said, if we use the building phone, they will know immediately that it is coming from a school.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm asking about, when you mentioned way earlier that you were making arrangements to have the law enforcement tour the buildings, so that they'd have a familiarity with the layout?
Oh, yes, we will, yes. The answer to that is yes, we will, we will. Either we're going to have somebody from the county, or we'll have the Rockville Center police, or both.
Okay, thank you.
I think we could do both. Commissioner kind of inferred that they are, they are 100% behind going to Covert, they have no problem, no issue doing that, and that I think that they, you know, he will do whatever he can to make sure that when that call is out on the airwaves, the Rockville Center police also will be there, so. They would be willing to, you know, to go through the buildings there also and be familiar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could clarify something, if the call is originating from a Covert School, it will go to Hempstead Police.
Right, but it will be identifiable as a school, right? Yeah.
Rockville Center police and Hempstead Police will be responding.
They what? They don't.
Cars responding can talk to them. So the Rockville Center police are responding to Covert Schools, can, if it is radio, talk to Hempstead County Police, would also be responding.
Right.
So there is an open communication between the two agencies on affordable radio.
But in terms of time, it's our belief that the Rockville Center police, because of their patrols, will be able to get there before...
Naturally, they're closer, because most of the first precincts are usually Rockville.
Elsewhere, okay. We're aware of that.
Hi, I know, I need a milk crate. Lori Shapiro, 11 Milburn Street, parent of three. I just wanted to, of course, applaud all of you for all the work you put into this, and, you know, it's really wonderful to hear. And Tara, thank you for bringing up the nationwide effort to put a voice to school safety, which is on March 14th. I know you guys mentioned it earlier, so my question is just twofold. After, I guess, you had the follow-up meeting, how will parents know what schools are participating in the 17-minute walkout, and for the schools that aren't? I know that there's also a wear orange movement for that day, which is the color affiliated with school safety now, and so especially for the younger elementary schools who may not be participating in the walkout, is there a way to sort of let the students know that they too have a voice in this and that they're part of the solution, and can we sort of create that initiative to let them maybe have a wear orange day on that day for anyone who wants to participate?
We're not that far down the road yet. We're meeting with the students first on Friday, and as I mentioned to you earlier, Ms. McGinn will be with us. I'm not anticipating elementary school participation at this point.
Can they participate in the color, in wearing color, or will that not happen?
I'm not sure that we're looking to encourage our elementary students to get involved in it at this point. I don't, I'm not sure what we would gain by that.
We don't think many of the elementary kids, I mean, if you walk around the building, I don't think many of them, they might have heard something, but I don't think they're really invested or aware of it, so I feel like if we do that, it might heighten their, you know, insecurity. I think that's not a great idea. We're not discussing it, and we haven't heard anything from them, I mean...
All right, that's fine, I just think school safety is just an important thing for all kids at any age to sort of just be aware of, and, you know, wearing a color is not scaring, I would not think scaring them in any way, you don't have to talk about guns or anything.
Well, you know what, we feel like it's not really, it's not about school safety in many ways, it's a protest in some ways, not that we're against that, but we just feel like with the elementary students, why put it out there if they're not really talking about it?
Okay.
Hi, my name is Tracy Pfeifer, 5 Hanover Place. Again, thank you so much for your rapid response. I feel so much better about what's going to be put in place for our children's safety. In addition to the security guards that you're talking about at the door, especially for elementary level, because I have two children at Watson, we're on a very busy corner. Our children are out there for four hours a day at recess, and there's nobody to watch them, there's nobody patrolling, I mean, in addition to the cars that drive by, so I'm wondering if there could be any type of security that's making their presence known as well.
Joan, I think you may want to respond to that. We are very conscious of exactly what you're talking about, and we've had lots of conversations about this. Joan, go.
I'm planning to put the security guard outside at lunch. To me, that's the major concern, walking the perimeter of the playground and the field. And I think that that person's presence, saying RVC security, or whatever the district decides that their shirt or jacket is going to say, is a good thing. Perception is very important, and I think people need to see that we have security on the grounds, and I think that will be really effective, because that's always been a concern of mine, you know.
Yes, I do.
So I'm really, really appreciative of getting the security guard.
Great, thank you.
It's great for all of us.
Thank you, very good question.
Mrs. Waldman?
Yes.
When the students are out, who's out there with them?
No one. We just send them out alone. At Watson, we just send, they're very independent, we send them out alone.
Look at that face, are you serious?
Beest of time at Watson. No, we have lots of adults outside with them, and they're strategically placed in front of the fence, looking in at the children, the children are not allowed at the fence, because years ago, we had a few cars come through the fence, and the district did provide us with the metal poles, which has really helped us, but I do agree with Tracy Pfeifer that it's a major concern, our location is a tough one for an elementary school. The security guard, I believe, is going to be very good for us, so thank you.
I just didn't want anybody to think that we just open the doors and say, go play, come back in an hour.
Can I just say also, I plan on, I mean, when I was thinking about when we're getting a security guard, I will have to put the security guard outside as well on the field, and then have an aide for that hour be at the desk who lets people in, so that there's someone still at the desk, but that the security presence is very important outside, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Hi, Pam Kluzis, 60 Raymond Street. I was just wondering, I have a child in elementary school at Hewitt, I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more specifically about what the idea of having a security guard, what the responsibilities of a security guard, and what the presence of the security guards would be on the elementary level?
For the most part, they will be having two areas of responsibility. One will be to circulate around the building, outside the building, pretty much the same thing that they do here at Southside High School, and then in addition to that, we want them to be the person who is greeting those and, in fact, monitoring who it is that's entering the building, unless they are assigned by the principal. And we leave a lot of that up to the principals, as you heard just from Joan and from Darren, there are particular vulnerabilities that we have within the building that we believe a security person might in fact be more, it's more important that they be there. By the way, during that period of time, we don't have a lot of visitors, so again, from a strategic point of view, they could easily be located on the playground with the kids, but their primary responsibilities would be two, one would be to, again, make sure that the perimeter of the building is safe, probably do a sweep within the building in the morning, and then in fact, spend a good part of their day at the desk, greeting people who may be the visitors.
Okay, and the idea is that each elementary school has one or two?
One.
One, okay.
Yes. Thank you.
I think for Hewitt, arrival and dismissal is a time that I worry about. I do greet the children in the morning, but a security officer at the arrival time and dismissal time, I think would be a really important and crucial time for safety at Hewitt.
Hi, I'm Jamie Devine, I'm at 56 Pine Street. I have a child at Hewitt and two in the high school, and my question is regarding the high school. At drop-off time, it's insane in the morning when all those kids are running through the door, and I know you said it's just going to be two doors open now rather than three, is that correct? It used to be the two on the side, and then the one going into the front, and now each child is going, I just want just some clarification, so I could explain it to my kids and know how it's going to work. When they're dropped off on the side, there's going to be a security guard checking IDs at both entrances?
No, at one entrance into the colonnade, as they were, they've been doing this all week, by the way, so this is why my presence was out there. When the students arrive at the colonnade, the door to the left is one that they will enter.
Okay, so that other one is going to be locked?
Correct, and there'll be two security guards checking IDs, so that there's not a line of students waiting to get into the high school.
That's what I was wondering, because I know, you know, my son is always the last minute running in.
Don't tell anyone, he's got it licked. The real crunch time is 7:10 to 7:26, when the buses arrive, that's when the major flow of traffic is.
Okay.
It actually alleviates, anyone who drives up to the high school will testify to this, from 7:45 to 8 o'clock, you just fly right up, so it's nice.
I wouldn't call it flying.
By the way, just, if I could just jump in, the reason for that south entrance being used, if you are aware, then the north entrance on the colonnade, puts you right into the classrooms.
Right.
There are a whole series of classrooms on the left-hand side, there's the auditorium doors on the right. We can lock the auditorium, and then on the right-hand side on the south entrance are all of the guidance offices and the administration offices, all of which can be locked. What we're trying to do is move all of the traffic to the lobby, so that, but we don't want kids necessarily walking around, particularly in inclement weather, to the front, many of them probably will anyway, because it may be easier for them to get through that door.
Right.
But we have to understand that our intent was to have everybody enter through the front door into the lobby, and then through that south door, down that hall, and into the lobby.
So they're going to be coming in...
They're not going upstairs, if you know, there's a stairwell right there.
Yeah.
So we're going to station somebody at that point to ensure that the traffic does not go upstairs, but in fact moves to the lobby.
So the kids coming in the left door are going to be funneled into the lobby before they're allowed to go to their classes?
Well, there are no classes there.
In that left door?
No, on that side, there are no, there are no classrooms on that side, and we did that on purpose.
And each child is going to be checked with an ID?
Yes.
As they walk in the door? And that's not going to hold up kids getting to classes, or it's going to, and they're going to look at the IDs well? I'm worried about in a few weeks that, you know, things are going to lax, become more lax, and they're going to be, you know...
Listen, it's a change in culture, I think we need to learn to live with it. Kids understand it. One of the things that has been amazed to us is that many of the kids have expressed relief, so they're not...
Not my kid.
They understand this. Pardon me?
Said, "Not my kid," he's like, "It's going to take me longer to get to school, I'm running late."
It probably won't, it may take a few more seconds.
Right, no, and I'm all for that, I think it's great. My other concern was, someone brought up recess, and then also sporting events, what about, you know, football games, what about things along those lines? Is there going to be any additional security at those type of events?
We have focused our attention on the hours of operation for school. We have not left out of the discussion what takes place after school and in the evenings at all of our buildings, by the way. For those of you who are in the buildings, you know that the gyms are open into the evenings for a variety of different activities that go on. We're going to put together plans for addressing that, and I'm not sure exactly what they're going to look like, but our focal point has been on the school day right now.
Right.
But we're not going to ignore that. We are, I know the board has brought it up to our attention, they really would like to see us, and they too would like to work on plans to ensure that we can provide some degree of security for all of the events that we have, many of which, by the way, are not our organizations, so that complicates things somewhat. Not everything that happens in the schools are our organizations. There are lots of, for example, BBL is in, I believe, four of our buildings.
That's true.
PAL is up in Covert School, the basketball program. So we are understanding of that, so we have to figure out how to make that work. We're not there yet, but we will be.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you all, I appreciate everything you've done tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. First of all, my name is Donald Mayoff, I have three kids at Covert, my oldest one will be going to the middle school next year. Thank you for everything you, all the information tonight. The added security measures, I think, are a long time coming, obviously, and like you said, the world we live in, it's unfortunate. I'm not, I'm not going to get up here and advocate for guns in schools, because obviously I know that's not the crowd here, but I did agree with him and everything he had to say with Sandy Hook. I've been with the FDNY wife over 14 years, so I'm very, if there's one thing I'm familiar with, it's response time, and I'm happy to hear that the response time is two minutes. I know in the city, it's probably three and a half, four minutes. However, two minutes to me still seems like a lot of time.
We know that.
That being said, a lot of districts throughout the country, they do have police officers in schools. Ideally, if it was up to me, there would be a police officer in every school, I know that may not be realistic, but with my oldest son going to middle school next year, I don't understand why we couldn't have police presence at all times in, at least in middle school and the high school, which are more likely, you know, areas. Has that been something discussed with the police department?
Look, these discussions are going to be ongoing. At the present time, we would like to do it without guns, if we can.
Well, I understand, a security guard, and that's been a big issue or topic, and like we said in Parkland, there's a security guard.
You know, one of the other things that we learned about Sandy Hook was that the man committed suicide when he heard the sirens. The sirens from the Rockville Center, I will tell you right now, when they, they're coming to the high school, or to any of the elementaries, you can hear them probably within a minute. I'm not so, yet again, we just, we try to anticipate everything.
Well, I understand, I appreciate that. Is there any discussion, has there been any discussion with the police department? Is that something where you...
Oh, absolutely, about the sirens?
Or no, about like a, down toward, will there ever be police presence?
We have talked with the police department, and if you speak with them yourself, what they call an SRO.
Same routine.
Pardon me, a resource officer. They're armed, they're uniformed, they are a policeman who works for either the county or, in our case, the village. We've had discussions for years about that, and have felt that we were able to maintain security within the school district because of all of the other things and the unique unique nature of our community here in Rockville Center, without having to have that presence in our buildings.
Okay, and my second question, real quick, as far as the drills, I know eight drills, fire drills, four lockout, four lock-in. What are the procedures that are going on for what would be an active shooter drill? And I know there have been a lot of studies recently with what is the proper way to go about that, the whole huddling in the corner?
You know, we've been looking at some videos about procedures that are used elsewhere in the country. You know, I think one of the things that we will do is go back and revisit how we, in fact, go through those drills to make sure, you know, in some places, they flip desks, they cover their heads with books, they do a lot of other things. There's, there is, I saw a video the other day where they have a red line drawn down a portion of the building, which means that that's where kids should congregate when there is a lockdown, because no matter what, you can't see them from the door. So we're going to revisit all of that, but we do go through these drills. I don't know if any of the principals want to talk about?
Just so you know, when we do the lockdown drills, we actually do do that, the kids huddle, whether they're on the stage, we've identified areas that are problematic, so we've been working on that. But every classroom, they do exactly what I expect, and we walk around to make sure they're huddled in the back, away from windows, away from the door, with the lights off, and doors locked, of course. They pull, well, no, no, we don't, no. No, they just go to the back of the room.
That's somewhat controversial, by the way, just so you know. There are two, two schools of thought on whether, yes, okay, so.
Also, we don't, we used to use code words. We do not use those words anymore. We say, "This is a lockdown." This, you know, I mean, we, we're being real, without scaring the kids, obviously, hopefully.
Just so we understand, by the way, there's a lot of misinterpretation. Sometimes you will hear on the radio or the television that somebody is in lockdown. We're not. For the most part, we are in lockout. If there is an emergency, and I, just take note of what, it's, it's in our little presentation, we go into lockout when, for example, on Grand Avenue, there's a bank robbery. And we find out through either the first precinct or from the Rockville Center Police that the perpetrator was not apprehended. We will go into lockdown, in particular at Covert School or at Wilson School, and sometimes at the high school. We will not go into lockdown, we'll go into lockout, which means that we keep kids in the school, and we do not put them out for lunch, for phys ed, or for any activity outside of the building. We just lock kids in. When you hear it on the radio, they usually say, "Lockdown." Not so. So we, we have to make that distinction. Lockdown is when there is an intruder in that building, and we have to lock all of the doors. You heard somebody describe earlier, we lock the doors inside. Every teacher goes through then understands that routine. They are able to lock their door from inside, and nobody from the hallway can get into that classroom. Very, very important. So that, that lockdown procedure, we do drills, but we've never had to use it, thank God.
And if we don't get called by the police department, at least at Covert, the first precinct, the helicopters usually give us the sign, so we know immediately to bring them in and then call and ask questions after we bring them in.
Unless they're there to take you to Long Beach, right?
That is correct.
Right, right.
Dr. Jay, one of the things that we learned from speaking to the consultants was the importance of having emergency folders in each classroom.
Oh, thank you, yes.
And that was not something that we mentioned. So in each classroom, we have an emergency folder that hangs on the back of the classroom door. And in that folder is the class list, but more importantly, in that folder is the key to that classroom. So if the teacher cannot find their key, or if there's a substitute teacher in the classroom, or just in a panic, you just don't know where your pocketbook is, or whatever it might be, you can go to that emergency folder and get the key to that classroom door so that it can be locked down no matter who's in that, in that classroom. And that was one of the things that we learned from speaking to the consultants.
Yep.
Hi, again, thank you. Janet Griner, 84 Windsor Avenue. I just wanted to ask, so we talk a lot about spending money on all these enhanced security measures, and I'm not advocating that we don't. I'm wondering if we should also be looking at spending a little bit more money on the mental health piece of things? And I've been to other meetings where we talk about social media and increases in depression and anxiety, and I'm just curious, more so from the middle school and high school reps, do you feel like your personnel, is that capacity? Like, should we be looking at maybe more another psychologist or another guidance counselor or something to sort of balance the tables? Because the reality is, as many measures as we put in, God forbid this ever happens here, it only takes one time, and so perhaps we should address that piece with a little bit more funding or something along those lines?
Come to our budget discussions. We have that.
I will try.
Right, we'll put you to sleep, but nevertheless, if you have trouble, that's a great place to start. So, look, the whole point is that we're very cognizant of issues related to mental health at this point. We've had numerous discussions. Noreen is, one of the reasons for having her portion of this presentation tonight was to talk about the depth of, of the resources that we have available here. I think many of us should be very proud that the Board of Education has supported all of our efforts in the past, not just to bring in the SEL programs, but make sure that we are appropriately staffed with both counselors, guidance counselors, psychologists, and social workers. We, that doesn't mean that we cannot use more, and whether you are responding because you are aware of something that's going on in the world at large, but I won't say we are overwhelmed, but there is a greater incidence in recent years of mental health problems that need to be addressed professionally, that we have not experienced in the last two generations. So we're very cognizant of that, and we're very sensitive to it, and we are trying to make sure that our buildings are appropriately staffed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joan, I don't know if you needed to re-
If I could, I did, Dr. Johnson, the board actually did increase the nursing staff and the psychologist staff in recent years. And look, if someone said, "You want to news, another social worker and a psychologist," I would not turn it down. But the, the truth is, beyond the PPS staff, who, they have a very, very busy and intense job, every single person in our district, every single person that works for our school has a role in this. And that is where, you know, really making sure that every teacher, every aide, every teaching assistant, every nurse, every administrator understands the ramifications and the signs and the symptoms of mental illness. I really can't overstate that. It's really where the support's going to happen. Obviously, when a child ultimately needs counseling or needs a specific service that a psychologist or a social worker can provide, that's where we need the staffing. But the identification of kids at risk and the relationships that are built are not just PPS issue.
Elizabeth Locato, 195 Hempstead Avenue. I have a question concerning the special needs population. Is there any type of protocol in terms of the staff that deals with the special needs population? You know, some of these children experience overload of sensory issues, alarms going off, people screaming, a police officer running in, hands up, they may stick their hands in pockets, misinterpretations. Are we accommodating for that population as well? As well as with the emergency list that's on the back of the door? Obviously, for confidentiality reasons, we cannot identify these children on a list, but there's got to be some way that they need to be identified, because they're going to need a little special support and care and assistance, and potentially could cause a situation and be more dangerous. If you have a child that's a runner or a wanderer, they may take off, and then, what do you do? So I just am asking, have we taken that into consideration? And, you know, how are we going to address those issues?
Yes, we have, and even more so of late. I had a, really two great emails from parents, students with special needs with those, one with a question and one with some, some information. And I did go, that's where I precipitated a conversation with the police commissioner. So I think it's twofold, Liz. It's, it's the police or the first responders' understanding that students with special needs may have a different way of responding, or maybe it would take longer to process the information, or the instructions that are given to them. And I feel very comfortable after talking to Commissioner Gennario, that they are, definitely have provided their police force with that training, and he's looking for, to do more of it. And then today even, we talked about what we could do internally, you know, in terms of really specific cases. And then the flip side is, is what the kids are learning here. And just to reinforce with the, especially with our special classes, not just special classes, but the special classes in particular, students with intellectual disabilities, students on the spectrum, are given maybe some more specific instruction in terms of how to respond in an emergency.
Well, I mean, that would be my first concern, was to automatically think of the core program in Covert, the middle school and the high school, and then our RISE program in Hewitt, where, you know, kids can't communicate for themselves and advocate for themselves in that respect. And I know that staff at that point is going to be worried about the mass concerns of all the children, because that should be what the concern is. But, you know, that child who has that one-on-one, that is now assisting seven or eight or ten or twenty even kids, depending on what the scenario is, it makes me nervous that, that child may get lost in the shuffle.
I, I don't think-
I know nothing's perfect.
Nothing's perfect. If I could just say something, nothing's, it's me. Over here. Nothing is perfect, but I will say that I'm very comfortable with, with, we do all the lockdown, the lock, the drills and everything like that, and everything is explained and re-explained and re-explained. The guidance counselors and the special teachers, and especially, say, working with the students in the core class and the aides, everyone is trained in what to do. So, for example, as you know, we had an evacuation a couple of weeks ago, months ago. Never should that have to happen again, but we had one. And those students with their teachers and their aides, they were taken care of and taken off to the evacuation site, and totally taken care of by teachers, peers, nobody knew what was going on, nobody knew what was real, but they were taken care of by, we have an incredible, also best buddies program in both schools. So between the peers, the teachers, and the teachers also, and the aides, and the teacher assistants, like I saw with that core class, saying, "I'm with this one and this one, and listen, you need to be with." The second thing is, we all have an elopement plan, right? So we have, the way we do it at the middle school, we have something what we call the common folder. First of all, at one of the, one of the faculty meetings, the teacher talks about students who may elope. You know, we're not publicly saying everyone's names and taking notes and everything, but we are saying that these are children that you have to be aware of. And then we have pictures of all of the children, and there's something we call the common folder, which is only open to teachers at South Side Middle School, but all the pictures are shown, so you know everyone is aware of who everyone is. And just to speak for the core class, except also students in other programs, you'll see a guidance counselor, there's a child that wore headphones for the, for sixth and seventh grade every time we had a fire drill. Okay, now, it's middle of seventh grade, there was no time to run and headphones, but it was okay, because someone is assigned to go directly to that child, and that child made it to the evacuation site. So I know, I hear what you're saying, and in response, I'd agree with Noreen in saying, "If you want to give us more staff, feel free, that's great. We'll take it on every single level across the entire, from everything." But by the same token, I'm very confident in our PPS staff, in our social workers, guidance counselors, and the whole school. And one of the mantras that we have is that we take care of each other, so everybody knows everybody and helps. So we, we are tighter than you think.
I didn't say you, I just-
No, I know, I just felt it.
Well, and fortunately, you just made me think of something. So yes, we have best buddies in the middle school, and we have them in the high school. And obviously, for very apparent reasons, it's not a program we can have on the elementary level. But maybe now with this notion and that list that gets hung on the back of the door, maybe those identified special needs children that the kid in their class just knows, "That's Bobby, and he's no different than me," could be assigned a buddy. So on the list, you have your gen ed student with your inclusion student and their buddy together. No different than if they went on a class trip, and when you're in elementary school, you got a buddy. So maybe that would be something to think about. It may seem small, but at least then we're creating what you're looking to create, our students looking out for one another and playing an active role in trying to keep their school environment safe as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one final thing for elementary school, and it goes to what Lori brought up. I, I, I've, you know, two children who go to elementary, and it's such a hard thing to explain to the younger kids what some of these drills are about. And that's a fine line, and I understand the point of not trying to scare them, but at the same time, I feel strongly that they need to understand enough to know, if you, Dr. Johnson says it all the time, "If you see something, say something." You know, the visitor passes, part of the reason we think they should be in the elementary schools is so that children can identify who works in the school versus who does not. And I think the more education and support we give our littler friends, the better, because, you know, something that might seem normal to them if they are aware that that person doesn't have that pink badge on, and they're in the women's bathroom, and I don't understand that, and now they go to their teacher, and, you know, there's people that are in places that they shouldn't be. I'm in full support of showing some support on the elementary level towards this cause. I don't think wearing a color or showing some sort of support towards it is a negative thing. I think we have to find a balance of not scaring them, but they need to be educated, and it's something I, I am very afraid of for my own children, that in these drills, they, that they clearly understand what they're being expected to do.
And, you know, to that point also, I feel like once we put in all of these new measures, we really do need to do that and talk to the kids, but until we know exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it, I would advocate for us to just wait so we could have a discussion with them. Even in kindergarten, talking about the visitor passes, absolutely, but wait until we know exactly what we're doing before we go ahead and involve them. But I, I think you're absolutely right about that.
And I think a piece of that starts at the home, and you as parents, us as parents, we decide how we're going to communicate that to our children. So I think that's an important piece of how you want to handle it, think about that and have conversations about it. That's what we're doing tonight, so, thank you.
Good job. Good job. (applause).
Dr. Johnson, before-
More than anything, so you can have opportunity for visitors on other subjects?
Yes.
I'll state it. Dr. Johnson, before we leave this subject, I just want, you spoke of recommendations of automatic visitor identification reader, automated.
Yes.
Security guards in each building, what that would go, a security desk in each building. Is that what you want, do you, is that what you're recommending the board act on?
I'm asking for authorization to move forward on, on the purchase of that equipment, as well as the hiring of security, and lastly, authorization to move forward with the creation of that space at Hewitt School.
So I'd like to hear from the board?
Makes sense. Make, yeah. Right, you said Hewitt.
Hewitt.
Yeah, changing the library around at Hewitt.
Yes.
Yes, makes sense.
I'm sorry, yes, creation of the, the, right, that little space. Right. All right, so is everybody on the board in favor? Does everybody, anybody have any questions or concerns?
Nope.
All right, so. Thank you so much. Bravo, good for you. Glad to hear.
Nobody wants to hear about the budget?
(inaudible).
Yes.
Good night.
We're, we're just going to recess for five minutes to just stretch our legs, and we'll be back to talk about the budget. All right, thank you for staying. We have decided to postpone our proposed budget hearing until next meeting.
Shout out to Mike.
So at this time, I think we'll skip the order. We have a few visitors who would like the opportunity to say something, so we'll go to that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got up 4:30 this morning, catch a flight back. Two quick items. I wanted to give you the good news that I've suspended my quest for a seven-person school board in favor of the change in the law. I recognize as citizen taxpayer that it would not be economical under this current law to pass that and then have to have another election closely thereafter. I've written to, had discussions with Senator Kaminsky and Assemblyman Curran about amending the law, that at such time, it should take place the following May election. When the law was originally passed, it was never conceived that we have all the districts on the same day at the expense of running an election. And not so much for this district. I think in the case of Hempstead, where there's a five-member board and the balance changed there, it would have been better served to have a seven-member board. And I know that's not the issue here, or not will ever be the issue here, hopefully, but I, I think that it's a realization that it may be better. I'm talking to our regent, he's still in there, Roger Tillis, and I want to talk to him next week about that. On another note, I saw there was correspondence on a subject near and dear to my heart, and Liz, I saw that you were copied on the correspondence with regards to the cameras in front of the schools. I'm a proponent of turning them back on. People have no respect for a school zone. This April is the 19th anniversary of my daughter getting struck by a car in a school zone in front of the temple. A school zone from, when she was walking from the middle school to after-school religious instruction at the temple, and no worse nightmare than getting that phone call from the police. And all I could say when he, I was at my house waiting to go out of town on a business trip for a limo to take me to the airport, and instead I had RVCPD take me to NUMC, and all I could say to them, "Is she alive?" And I don't want any parent to have that nightmare. I think we, we have to be more vigilant today than ever before. She was hit by a driver that was distracted, and that is a real issue out there today with distracted driving. And not from the money grab, the way Nassau County went about it was the wrong way. The way they implemented it was wrong. Everything they did was wrong. And the cameras are still out, and they're installed in front of, if you look in front of the Watson School, the company that put them, installed them, never took them down. They left them there, they're there. There, that's one location I know of. There's a lot of other locations around the county on Franklin Avenue in front of that school. I slow down in a school zone. I get haunted by people for slowing down in a school zone. I watch people pass the double yellow line in a school zone. I watch them when they whiz by the school bus on Franklin Avenue with the school they just renamed on Franklin. Everybody's in a Russian light, and they already killed a crossing guard there in Hempstead, a beloved crossing guard with an accident there. So in my mind, you can't do enough enforcements in a school zone. When I went to college in Peoria, Illinois, I first found out about school zones, Caterpillar Tractor, that's what it was called in those days, Caterpillar Tractor, I'm dating myself, that was just cat. They deserted Peoria, Illinois, by the way, this past year, but they donated flashing yellow lights in 1972 to every school zone in Peoria County, and that was their gift back to the county. And I remember what a fight we had to get in school zones, just the speed alert. And back in 1972, they were putting them out there. So I know you were copied on it, you had a discussion, what was the outcome of that? Have you spoken to that person?
I, I did not, I have not, I've reached out to her. She was from a lobbying firm up in Albany. She originally was part of NISBA, and that's why she had my name. So I reached out to her, she did not get back to me. I think our feeling as a board was, while we understand the county's desire for cameras, if it was the county's desire, we really liked the flashing lights that tell you how fast you're going, especially when you're going faster. That was something that you've talked about for as long as I've been on the board, and Mr. Spalding behind you had a lot to do with getting on both Hempstead Avenue and by-
We worked collaboratively. I let them have Hewitt, I, I took-
By Watson and by-
I, I took Watson, he took COVID.
So, and, and our point, our feeling was, if you want to give us more of those, we'll take them, but right now, I, as I said, I had a call out to her, she didn't return my call.
Just because she's a lobbyist up here, I know a lot of the lobbyists in Albany, I'll be up there Monday night and Tuesday lobbying. I wonder if the district clerk could share that with me, because I'm not allowed to take it from out there, and if you could share that name, and I'll reach out.
You don't have an iPhone?
Uh, you want me to, okay, I guess. That's the way my kids would do it, okay. Okay, good point, thank you. Because, not for the money.
No.
Just as the deterrent.
Yes.
And not that the county doesn't need the money, but maybe we could use it also. Garden City tried to do it where they would keep it, Mayor Murray, and I discussed it, he's not embracing it at the moment.
But everyone I've spoken with feels that those signs that tell you how fast you're going-
Yeah, that has had an effect.
They really work much better than, than getting a $150 ticket three weeks, four weeks later.
People have calmed down with those signs. I see the difference in the morning on the way to work.
Yes.
So I'm very happy we had them installed.
I think they're great signs, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have to add, with getting those flashing lights and the speed signs telling you how fast you're going, it was certainly nice having somebody on the Nassau County Planning Board or Commission, whatever you're on there, Jeff, to help, was a big help.
Excuse me, can you state your name and address?
Sure. For the record, my name is Greg Spalding, citizen taxpayer.
Are you related?
Maple Avenue, South Hempstead. I'm a little concerned about the signage. Even when I was a board member, I was always concerned about the signage and how old they get and how you can't read them after certain points, but if you're addressing signage for visitor entry in all our buildings, I'm worried about Project Great visitor entry. You know, you're sending two different messages. You know, if Project Great, go this way, for all visitors, go this way. And so I don't know how you address that, but I'm just pointing it out, and I'm sure the great minds of everybody sitting up there will figure it out, if Robert Erree hasn't figured it out. If everybody remembers that the, who was it, North Korea launched their missile strike and everybody got notified of an incoming missiles on their phones.
In Hawaii, not, not here.
Yes, in Hawaii. And that brought me to thinking about lockdown notifications on iPads, possibly having the teachers or administrative staff in the buildings, or if COVID goes into a lockdown, all the administrators' iPads all of a sudden come across with a lockdown notification on their iPads. I know the, the technology is out there because they could do it with cell phones, I can't imagine they can't do the same with an iPad. So that's just a thought. I discussed already with Dr. Leahy about our bus drivers. They are our first line of defense, picking up our children who we believe are safe from the second they walk out my front door to the second they come back in my front door. I hold their safety in your hands. Our bus drivers being the first line of defense are possibly a good resource to use in identifying kids that are having social issues or emotional issues or any issue for that matter, that there should be a system in place that allows the bus driver to communicate that to a school official and hence identify a possible issue. So that was one concern of mine, and Dr. Leahy said that's already in the works, so that's, that was good to hear. Another issue I'd like to possibly see is unified bus ID and, I'd, school ID. Right now, currently, our students have a bus ID and they have a student ID. So which one are they going to show up on, on Monday? Are they going to bring their school ID, are they going to bring their, you know, I don't know if there's confusion out there already, but if we can incorporate that all onto one ID, that'd be great. Another issue is regarding a crisis, and I'm going to call it a crisis because that's what's happening around the, the country. And the fire service, whenever we have a crisis identified in an area where the fire chief needs help in dealing with counseling of not just his members, but his whole department, they call a critical crisis team. And basically, that, that's counselors that come, they're volunteers, obviously, because it's a volunteer system, but they come from other departments, and they come into our area and they talk to our people about what they're dealing with. If you're going to be dealing with a crisis here in a high school, you have great counselors, you have great guidance counselors, great administrators, but they're going to be grieving. So now ask them to take their grieving and put it aside and help the students that are also grieving. So it's, it's a very large, it's very difficult for them to do that, I think. And my thought process was, is maybe, Dr. Johnson, you orchestrated back with the buses, a consortium, and my thought was maybe a consortium of a crisis team that can be activated by a superintendent of schools. And it would, similar to like Nassau County, you would send your, I don't know, your top people that were already identified as being part of that team, whether it becomes a billable thing or not a billable thing, that's for discussion amongst the school districts. But if we're going through a crisis, our people that deal with crises are going to be going through a crisis too.
Okay. I, I will tell you though, Greg, we do it informally. We've never put together a formal consortium, but I can tell you that, that when there have been crises in other communities who are here, we very often will get a call. It usually hovers around a death of a student, but in the event that something like that occurs, I will tell you that I will oftentimes hear from my colleagues in other school districts who will volunteer to have some of their people come over in the event that we need them. And we do the same thing.
And similar to the fire department, we just, we make one phone call and the team shows up.
Right.
You know, there's no multiple calls that have to be made. The person in charge, I mean, just makes one phone call.
What we usually do, by the way, just, just particularly since the other, the counselors from other communities may not know our kids, that we will share within our buildings. So that what we will do is, we have a whole network within our own system, and we will move people from one building to another in order to deal with the crisis.
Right. And when I say crisis, it means probably going to be a large-scale crisis, and, you know, like I said, our people are going to be grieving too, so there's a lot to consider, and it's just a thought you could discuss-
It's a good one and very important.
Other superintendents that are out there. And a thought came to mind during the lockdown, what happens if somebody pulls the fire alarm? What are the kids doing? If they're in a lockdown and they're secured in their classroom, and all of a sudden the fire alarm starts flashing, and the normal reaction is to get out.
I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I know what my gut tells me, but I don't want to respond until I have-
I would, I personally would think the, you know, like, I think Chris had mentioned, you know, the, the administrator has the ability to get on the PA and let the staff know what's going on, whether or not the kids should get out or not get out. But I think it needs to be identified because you have, you can't just shut the fire alarm system off, like, you know, I don't even-
Well, you can't shut it off, period.
Yeah, so you have two different or three different types of things going on, you know, in the building, and what happens if all of a sudden somebody-
You know, once that alarm goes off, the fire department will respond.
Absolutely, but the, the police department can keep them away if needed, if they're here first. But, and you're going to be going through a lockdown, if the building's locked down, now you have the fire department coming up with, they'll have card key access, obviously, I'm assuming with the police department. But that's just for your planning purposes.
Fine, okay.
And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, by the way.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding.
So, on, on that subject, in addition to police, maybe the three chiefs, you should give the card access to the building also. They have now keys on the, when you have the lock boxes on your business establishment so they can get the keys and open, not break any doors or anything like that. So if you do that, I think that would help, and you can trust the three chiefs to have it, it wouldn't be accessible to everybody on every truck. One of the three chiefs usually responds to a call.
We'll, we'll look into that, thank you very much.
And the fire drill situation, my wife told me at dinner tonight, in her school, there was a fire drill, and the kids were afraid to leave. And he's, that was a real problem that they didn't realize, they didn't want to leave there. So there's a lot of further thoughts.
Thank you.
Opportunity for superintendent?
I just wanted to mention two things. One, you know, we are here at Southside High School, a reward school. My congratulations to the staff and the administration here at Southside. And secondly, General Officer Christopher Heron is going to be speaking here on March 20th at, at the high school, I believe at 7:30 in the evening. I believe it's going to be a sell-out. He's a very passionate man, very, very knowledgeable, very well-known, and he's going to draw. And again, I know what we talked about tonight, but it shouldn't mean that we shouldn't ignore some of the other problems that we have within our community, and he's going to help us reawaken in us, I hope, the spirit of response that's necessary by our families and our parents, so I would encourage people to go.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Opportunity for board members?
Mrs. McNulty? Sure. Well, I was going to thank all of the parents that came out tonight for their attendance at this meeting. Thank you. Thank you for staying with us. I'm going to take my candy out. I think that we had a really great, great conversation tonight. I think that these are conversations that are taking place across the country, and I'm so proud of the parents for coming out. I'm proud of the administration, and I'm proud of the board for the decisions that we were able to make tonight and push forward, so I really thank everyone for that. Would also like to say, congratulations to the two students that were here tonight, that was very exciting, some real outstanding achievements. It's nice to hear that about our students in Rockville Center and the high school, so congratulations. I also wanted to say that this, thank you for the sponsorship, Sept did their camp fair this week, so I thank them for sponsoring that, that's really important for our special needs population, for the parents and the students, so I thank them for that, and I think that's it. Would you always call me Mrs. McNulty? I think Mike McNulty is going to be mad about that.
I need a name tag this one.
Also, congratulations to Michael and Peter, very impressive young men, and I'm sure they have great success ahead. I've heard the robotics teams at both middle school and high school have achieved state competition levels, so that's wonderful. I know that's something that the parents came out for and the board was really excited to support, so I'm really proud to hear that. I also wanted to say thank you to the parents, but not only for attending tonight, but the letters that they write are so important and really profound and really rich of information, and we really do rely on that, so not only to thank them who did it, but also to encourage people to do that, it's a great way to get in touch with us. We do really read them and discuss things that come through those letters, and I really do appreciate that. I was going to thank Robert for all the work he did on the budget presentation, so I'll save that until the next time, because I know he really did work really hard on that.
He does have a great presentation.
And, and I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to do it, but let's save it for when we have the packed house again. And also a thank you to Noreen and Dr. Johnson, who have helped to set up special ed forums coming up for the flyer, I think was just approved recently, so that should go out. But for, for three PTA meetings in the, in the next month or so, there's going to be an opportunity for special ed parents to talk to Dr. Leahy and Dr. Johnson, so I really appreciate those being set up, and they'll be great. And, and really also thank you to all the principals who gave up their personal time tonight and always, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hackett. Mr. Mason?
Just very simply, thank you to our community for having a true, frank, and, and open conversation on, on one of the more important topics that could confront any, any, anybody at any point in time. The, what we want to do is educate our kids, but we want to educate them safely, which should be paramount. So it's good to start having an open dialogue like this and, and to get in front of, to work together as, as one rather than different, for different purposes. Thank you.
Mrs. Deion?
Well, you guys have all said it, but I'm going to say it again anyway. Thank you, the community, our staff, our administrators who have left. We always thank people after they've gone, which I think is really unfortunate, so I don't know how we-
I was just thanked before I went.
What?
I was just thanked before I went.
That's true.
That's true. Okay, all right, so, except for Robert, we always, but I, I think it was really wonderful that everybody was here and participated, not just in our community, but our principals, to really see how everything interacts together. So, Dr. Johnson, thank you, I know we put a lot of pressure on you, and we really appreciate all that you've done with, with everybody up here. It goes without saying that our children should come home from school, but there's no question there, but when our children graduate, they leave here, they leave us, and they leave our nest, and they go off, and they go- I know we put a lot of pressure on you, and we really appreciate all that you've done with everybody up here. It goes without saying that our children should come home from school, but there's no question there. But when our children graduate, they leave here, they leave us, and they leave our nest, and they go off, and they go to college, and they should come home from college. And they should come home from concerts, and they should come home from movie theaters, and they should come home from church. This problem is not just our problem, it is a problem that we have in our society. I, I think we've all been inspired by the students from Parkland, and how they've responded, and how they've become activists. I fully support the walkouts, and I really encourage and hope that our parents and our educators can get behind that. There is, we have to look at everything. We have to look at everything we can do in our buildings, we have to check our doors, and we have to lock everything, and we have to make sure everybody who's here is supposed to be here. But we have to look beyond that in our society, because one day, our kids leave. So, on a good note, yes, thank you for the, congratulations to our robotics teams, good luck to the red team and the blue team, or the blue team and the red team, I don't want anybody to think I'm picking sides, next week.
That's right, that's next.
Next.
Thursday is song night.
Thursday song night.
Bring your earplugs.
Bring your earplugs, right.
Friday and Saturday is the final night.
And we're live streaming it again. Are we live telecast?
And your ears will appreciate that so much.
All right, so, very exciting.
All right, live stream.
Live streaming?
As has been.
Yep, good.
I would like, there's nobody here to-
Hi.
I would like to thank the parents of the community who have, who gave us all the information and all their concerns and all their fears, put that out there for us to read and understand and try and come to a place, the place that we're trying to reach now. I am so grateful for this administration, for the work they put in to make this meeting go the way it went. It could have been such a hard, so much harder to hear, you know, hear the public if we couldn't, you know, help them understand where we're going. And I am so grateful for what, you know, the presentation that was put together, how insightful it was, and how they made the public understand where we are with security, where we're gonna go, and that we are open to listen to everything you have to say, and we're here to make your children safe in our schools. So I am very grateful for all that, and for all that they have done for us. With that, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports?
So moved.
As listed on the agenda. A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just Robert, can you, on the budget transfers, there's a column, it says, "Did it get approved", and they all say, "Doesn't need approval", and yet I seem to remember signing a lot of them. So can you just check that report and make sure that, you know, is there something that we're not filling out there?
Okay. Is that C on that?
That's C.
Okay. And, items for action, can I have a motion to?
Yes.
Oh. Acknowledge.
Yes, all in favor of the knowledge.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That was a question. All in favor?
Hi.
What was the question?
Liz had a question.
I have, hi, I just-
All in favor?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
I'm gonna have to break this up, right?
Yes.
Have a motion to accept all items except, including addendum A?
No, no, including addendum two.
Including addendum two.
Addendum two. It's like P A R. The P A R.
P A R.
P A R.
Okay. Have a motion to accept all items for action, including addendum two.
So moved.
Any questions?
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve, I meant addendum one?
To the P A R.
What was it?
To the P A R.
To the P A R.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
Will abstain. Can I have a motion to retire into executive session to discuss specific personnel and legal matters?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for staying, thank you. Thank you all.
We've got every minute.